Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to call-
Council members Hannah, Gronmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hockman, Mayor Newton, all present.
Thank you for the honor of doing this. I am so grateful that I live in this community. I really am. And any place I go that has those four words up on the wall, I am very, very pleased and impressed. He that dwells in the sacred place of the Most High shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty. It shall come to pass that if he will harbor harken diligently to the voice of the Lord, your God, and observe and do all his commandments, which I command you this day, that your God will bless you and prosper you in the land where you live. Father God, I am so grateful for those four words on this wall. I'm so grateful that you brought me to live in a community that honors the veterans and honors the decency that these four words represent. I am so grateful, Father. And it is my prayer that the Spirit of this community will somehow, in some way, shape, or form, will sprinkle out into all of the communities around that somehow this whole state will become a community that represents the belief that in God we trust. And so, Father, may every member of this church, every member of this board, every member of this community walk everlastingly in the paths of righteousness. And through their righteousness, the whole community will begin to exalt God in a way never before done. I am so thankful, Father, and I pray that you will, by the power of your Holy Spirit, lead every member of this community in the paths of righteousness for your honor and your glory. Thank you, Father. We pray this now in the name of the Master, Jesus Christ Himself. Amen and amen. Okay, so we're now going to have an EDACT Business Appreciation Award for the Circle D Ranch. I'll meet Scott DeRosa at the podium. And obviously, Scott got stepped on by his horse, so this is appropriate.
Good evening, everybody. And I hope everybody had a great day today. As most of you are aware, the City Council and EDAC, which is the Economic Development and Advisory Council, have worked together to go ahead and give an appreciation award each month to a business that we felt so needed to have a spotlight put upon it. In most cases, the businesses have contributed to the community in one way or another. They've helped sponsor events. They've brought some improved economic development to the area. Numerous things. In this particular case, we wanted to bring attention to a new business that is in the area. And knowing that they had a lot of opportunities anywhere else or any other city to bring their business, and they chose Norco. And also knowing that because of what they do with the ranch and everything else, that that will trickle around to our other businesses, like hay and grain, et cetera, in our city. So if I can invite Mickey- no, Mikey.
Mikey.
Mikey, sorry. That's the second time I've done that, sorry. Trujillo, up to the podium here, please. My apologies. Do you ever get mistaken for Mickey instead of Mikey?
Hey. Thank you very much.
How you doing?
Very well.
And Roy? And Jen, hi. Okay.
Would you like to read this, or is it the same?
I'm going to read it off this. So with my mayor, who at this time gets to be my assistant, one of those rare occasions. "The City of Norco hereby honors Circle D Ranch for officially putting Horsedown USA on the map as the home of the happiest horses on the earth, while making a commitment to supporting and contribute to the city's vibrant local economy." Excuse me, "economy." So thank you very much and congratulations. We're honored to have you as part of our community. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
I'd like to have you say a few words.
First of all, good evening and thank you. Some of you may know that this past Monday, we celebrated our 62nd anniversary at the Disneyland Resort on July 17th. And I am so honored and proud that horses have been a part of the resort since the very beginning. Walt Disney loved horses. He would ride them up down the coast of California. He even rode horses on the land, the Orange Fields, that would later become Disneyland. And one of the very first properties that was created was the original Circle D Ranch. So when it came time to find a new place to build it, we are so excited, and I can speak for Roy and for Jen, that Norco, Horsedown USA, is a proud partner with us because you share that same passion that we have for our horses. And on a personal level, as the Disney Ambassador with my partner, Alexa Garcia, we are so excited to participate in all the horse parades that we have here throughout the community. But we thank you once again for your history, for your heritage, for being a great partner with the city and with us. And we look forward to many, many more years. And as Mayor Greg Newton said on our dedication a month ago, "at the second happiest place on earth." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Roy. Jen.
Thank you.
Photo op.
Okay.
Okay, now we're going to do a new employee introduction. And our Finance Officer, Gina Schuchardt, will do the introductions. Good evening.
Yes, I'd like to ask Lizette Free, our new accounting manager, to introduce herself or step up to the mic so everybody can see her. And Lizette graduated from Chino High School and has a bachelor's degree of science in accounting from the Azusa Pacific University. She is a certified public accountant, a certified fraud examiner, and a Chartered Global Management Accountant. She has over 18 years of accounting and auditing experience. Prior to arriving to the City of Norco, she worked for eight years with an auditing firm that audited cities and counties. And then the next 10 years were for the County of Orange as an accounting manager in their internal audit division that was created, as you might recall, in the '90s after the county's bankruptcy. So she has significant experience in reviewing, auditing, and I have to say, excellent when we looked at her background, excellent comments from not only her coworkers, but from those departments that were audited by her about her style and her pursuit of everything that would help to make the county a better place. So finally, she lives with a husband in the city of Harupa Valley with her two sons and enjoys spending her free time traveling and enjoying the outdoors. So this is Lizette. I don't know if you're welcome.
Well, I just want to say thank you for letting me part of your city. I am here to serve you guys, the council, the employees, as well as the citizens. So whatever you guys need, I'm here to service. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And welcome.
I graduated from Chino High School, and there were still dinosaurs.
It's good to know our city attorney graduated school, though.
I'm shocked.
It was a release program.
There you go. So we digress. I'm now going to ask Eileen Flores from Government Affairs, rep from Southern Cal Edison. But I'd also ask that all my council colleagues please join us at the podium. And I see Christina. And any other NART members in the audience?
Linda, please.
Linda?
Do you mind if I say a few words? Good evening, everyone. My name is Eileen Flores. I'm the Government Affairs Representative from Southern California Edison. Through our shareholder funding, we are able to support community programs that focus on education, the environment, civic engagement, and public safety, and emergency response, and preparedness. As a result of this funding, we have been able to support programs such as Day of the American Cowboy, which I'm really looking forward to this Saturday, and then also the Holiday Parade. At the last State of the City event that you had recently, I was actually speaking to one of the volunteers from the Norco area- or I'm sorry, Norco Animal Rescue Team. And of course, she told me, yes, we could always use donations. So as a result of that conversation, I'm here tonight to present the program with a donation of $1,000. And also, I wanted to add that I have been an animal rescue volunteer, not for this program, but for another program for more than 12 years. So I understand the importance of our horses and our animals to our families and the communities. So we're really proud to be a part and a sponsor of this program. Thank you.
So we have to get you to the podium.
Yeah. I did wear heels tonight, just so you could see me.
Thank you again, Eileen. Okay, now we're going to have a presentation by Riverside County Transportation, an update on the Hamner Avenue Bridge. And I'd like to introduce Typhoon Saglum. I hope I was close. Good to see you again.
Honorable Mayor, council members, I'm very pleased to be over here tonight with very good news. With the passage of the Senate Bill 132, there has been a significant influx of funds into the Hamner Avenue Bridge. And this is on a cluster of five projects. The Senate Bill 132 was signed by Governor on April 28, 2017. And the bill amends the Budget Act of 2016 and adds items of appropriation on several items. Section 3 specifically addresses five projects. This is a cluster of five, known as the County Transportation Efficiency Corridor. Among them, 91 toll connector to Interstate 15, McKinley grade separation, Harupa Avenue grade separation, Interstate 15 and Limonite interchange, and finally, Hamner Avenue Bridge. While the Hamner Avenue received the least amount of money among these projects, that's just the right amount for the local matches required. The rest of the monies will be coming from Highway Bridge Program. I want to walk you through the project. As a reminder, I've appeared before you twice. And this is going to be a repeat, but it's just a reminder. Yeah, Hamner. It's an eight-and-a-half mile stretch of road through the cities of Norco and Eastvale. At the north end, it starts at Mission Boulevard in the city of Eastvale, and goes through Norco all the way to the southerly border. It's one of the most critical crossings on Santana River. If you exclude the Interstate 15 crossing right next to it, the nearest detour is seven miles either way, between River Road and Lambura. It functions also as an alternate route to 15 when there is congestion, maintenance work on the freeway, and in cases of emergency. It is considered an urban minor arterial in California road system. As a result, it qualifies for federal funds. In the city of Eastvale Circulation Plan, it's considered an urban arterial, and it's a six-lane facility in the town northwest zone. The existing bridge is a very old structure. It's 78 years old. It's almost time to retire this structure. It's only 36 feet wide, and it can accommodate two traffic lanes and a pedestrian walkway, which is on the east side of the structure. Based on the 2009 traffic counts, the average daily traffic on the bridge was 17,000 vehicles. Since we have started rolling with the project, we've run the traffic counts. Right now, we are monitoring at 29,000 vehicles. This is quite taxing for a two-lane road. And then the projected average daily traffic for the future year of the project, which is 2045 now, is in excess of 40,000 vehicles. Norco has made some improvements, both to the north and the south of the structure. At Schleisman- actually, to the south of Schleisman Road, to Silver Lakes, Eastvale, I believe, made some improvements also. The Norcos work widened the road from two to four lanes on the north side of the existing bridge. On the south side, between the Sixth Street and the Norco Drive- I'm sorry, the Sixth Street and the Detroit Street, it has been widened again from two lanes to four lanes. So the bridge is the bottleneck at two lanes. The bridge is entirely located within the city of Norco. It was built in 1939. As I indicated, it is now 78 years old, and it is considered structurally deficient. There's a parameter that we go and apply based on for the federal funds. It's called sufficiency rating. This parameter has to be below 50 to replace the bridge. We managed to bring it down to 64 with the water deficiency, so on and so forth. Now, we have managed to successfully negotiate with the State Department of Transportation to replace the bridge with six-lane structure. Yeah, it has been approved now. They are not going to ask for additional seismic analysis anymore. That was a tough one, but we managed to pull it. The existing structure conveyance capacity is substandard. Santana River is a very impressive river. I mean, it is dry most of the time with a trickle of water. But when it flows, it flows. And I've seen it several times. At this particular location, the 100-year flow is expected around 160,000 cubic foot per second. This is a lot of water. And at that rate, it overtops the northernly spans of the structure up to a depth of 3.3 foot. The scar depth- this is- I can define the scar as riverbed, and that scar depth, all that depth is flowing like mud. In other words, it does not provide any support for the piles holding the bridge. So the bridge is considered scar-critical also for 100-year flood. This is from 2010. And actually, if you look at this area, in the horizon, you can see the road closed signs. Okay? In 2010, was not a 100-year flood. Actually, it was not even 50-year flood, but it overtopped the northernly approached road. So the bridge is in need of replacement. The bridge is also considered seismically deficient. It has been retrofitted in 1978, benefiting only from San Fernando earthquake lessons. After that, we experienced Loma Prieta, Northridge. There were significant changes to the seismic code. So we don't consider the 78 up to date anymore. It's prone to liquefaction. Liquefaction, you can consider it like jelly holding the foundations. Once the liquefaction is induced into the ground, the ground does not have the capacity to hold the bridge anymore. I don't want to be alarmist, by the way. What we are talking about over here is extreme events. The bridge is fine as it is right now, but it needs to be replaced. We designed the structures for extreme events. Its concrete deck is severely deteriorating. There are a lot of cracks and spalls, so the bridge has to go. The existing length is 676 feet. We are going to increase this length to 1,200 feet. We are pretty much spanning the arch structure that is next to Silver Lakes all the way to the south end of the existing bridge. The width will be increasing from 36 feet to 100 feet. Within that width, we will be able to accommodate three lanes in each direction with a 12-foot-wide multipurpose lane. For the federal funding purposes, it has to be a multipurpose lane, accommodating pedestrians, bicyclists, as well as the equestrians. As I have indicated, the new bridge will be designed in accordance with the current code for structural seismic hydraulic and multipurpose trail. We've got some challenges during the construction. We have to maintain the traffic on the bridge, and we believe we will be able to do that. There may be a lane drop very late night, very few times. But other than that, we should be able to maintain the two lanes of traffic during the construction. We have to minimize impacts environmental. There are park areas in the area. That's a restriction. The south approach is a small canyon. It's going to present quite a few challenges. After we have started the project, we have realized that if we raise the bridge higher than where it needs to be, we will be able to balance the cost for the retaining walls on the south side and prevent property take. You probably know that there's a major transmission line that's parallel in the bridge on the east side. Relocation of those lines is a very costly and delaying proposition. So we are planning not to touch the transmission lines either. So we are working on an alternative right now that targets no right-of-way permanent takes and no utility impacts, major utility impacts, I mean. The only string that comes attached to this fund, SB 132, is the very tight deadline. Typically, these types of bridge projects is a 10-year process. We have just rolled with this project roughly three months ago. And the deadline is June 30, 2023, in order not to lose the funds. And when I say deadline, I mean, bridge in the ground, on the ground. We paid the last invoice or claimed the last invoice, that's about it. So this is our schedule. Actually, when the bill was passed, it's requiring a task force for these projects. We are working with a lot of people already on the job. This includes the Federal Highway Administration. The state is helping a lot right now to move the project forward. So we hope to be able to clear the project by the end of 2019. And then by the end of 2020, we are planning to award the job for construction, allowing two years, 2021 and 2022, for the construction. So we will have six months to wrap it up and build the state for the remainder. The total project cost is $56 million. As I have indicated, the Highway Bridge Program funds is going to pay for 88.5% of it. And the remainder for the local match is coming from Senate Bill 132 at $6.3 million, as it is right now. These numbers are subject to change as we go through detailed analysis. But this is just ballpark right now. That's about it. If you've got any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Berwin?
No, that's a good presentation. I've been getting bits and pieces of this through RCTC. But I know it's going to be a tight schedule. But I think everybody get to work, they can get it done. Thank you.
Robin? Kevin?
Thank you very much. It's really exciting. But you know what? I think that bridge was completed in 1941. I think the first one washed away, and this is the second one. Or was it 38? Anyway, I'll write you. I'll send you an email.
All right.
We know where that is. Thank you so much for your time and your presentation.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Okay, let's move into City Council. Communications reports on regional boards. Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, RCTC, that report that a gentleman just gave is part of the RCTC Commission. And the other thing with the RCTC is they're moving forward with a 15 freeway project. They ought to be able to start construction sometime after the first of the year. With Vector, they're working five days a week in Norco. If you'll look, you'll see their trucks here every day of the week. And the state had its first case of West Nile in horses about two weeks ago up in the mid-state. I forget if it was Fresno or where it was. But I haven't heard of any down here in our area. RTA, last month, they started their 25-cent bus rides for the students from grades 1 through 12. They can ride anywhere they want to for 25 cents. And after the first 30 days, there was over 50,000 students had ridden the buses. And the biggest route is going to the beach. They say that the buses are really- They say that the buses are really crowded with them going to the beach, and once you can't beat the deal for 25 cents, and they go everywhere. Like, I think a lot of them come out of Temecula and Marietta to go to the beach. A lot of them come from out in this area. So it's, it's really a good, good deal, and they have, if I can find my paper. RTA has an app. Now, it's free. It's called Bus Watch, and you can put it on your desktop, your laptop, or your mobile device, and at any time, you can go on there and find out what the bus schedule is, or if you're standing at a bus stop, you can dial in on it and find out how much longer it's going to be before the bus reaches your, your stop. So they're getting pretty modernized on, on everything, and on August the 8th, the NART team will be over at Arupa Valley with a national night out with the Sheriff's Department. We've done that two years in a row, one year in Eastvale, one year in Norco, and this year, we're going over to Arupa Valley and the Low Shop and Center, and I believe that event runs from 6:00 PM to 8:00, isn't that correct, Lieutenant? We're looking, looking forward to it, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Berwin? Robin?
Nothing, sir.
Ted?
Some of my colleagues and myself, we attended the League of Cities meeting. It's really interesting to go to that, and you get the legislative updates, and appreciate the drive out to the desert, and it was 116. I think the league finally realized that in the wintertime, the meetings will be held on the, in the east end, and in the summertime, they're going to hold them on the west end. Even the people from La Quinta agreed with that one. But we also had the Veterans Executive Committee for the Veterans Memorial, and nice thing about it, and for those who attended, I appreciate when you come out and you support Jeff Anderson from Rebuilding Warriors, when he gives his dogs, the service dogs, to these guys, these veterans with PTSDs and other disabilities. That really means a lot to him and the, and the rest, the whole program, especially us veterans, when you come out and share, so we appreciate that. Two Saturdays in a row for Jeff being out there. And finally, I want to remind everybody, this Saturday, the National Day of the American Cowboy, we had our committee, Brian's crew and I, and along the other volunteers putting this thing together. It's Saturday, this Saturday, July 22nd, at Pennington Park. We're going to have the gates open at 8:00 AM. Grand entry starts at 9:00 AM. You got to come out. I think Lieutenant Brittick's going to be out there. I see Captain Hedge is going to be out there, so you got to join and come on out. We're going to kick it off, Cowboy Way. Stagecoach races, we have, I mean, a stagecoach, a stagecoach should be out there. We got our 50-team, flag team out there, flag team out there, along with, there'll be some Juba Canada events. We'll have mule-driven pole chariot races, that would be kind of cool, along with the chuck wagon races. So a lot of stuff to do, and it's $5 per carload, and the fun thing is, what we're trying to do is bring your families out there, encourage them all out there, have some fun. We'll have activities for the kids to participate in. We want to make it a fun event, and then we're going to finish it off with a junior bull riding. So it's a good family entertainment for $5, and then some Jim Cannon events, you can bring your horse later on, participate in those in the, in the barrel race and the obstacle course. So check it out on the line and be out there on Saturday, have some fun with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Kevin?
I was also at Veterans Memorial Committee. There's some really exciting things coming down the pike in that direction. It's nice when we go to Jeff Anderson's handoff of the dogs. When we first started going to that, there'd be three people. Now, there was probably, what, 150? And it, it's, it's a very cool ceremony, means a lot. I went to WR Cog, and I think the most important thing that came out of that is the LED lights. There's a huge grant, and Brian jumped on it, and maybe you can, so we're going to be buying lights for the interiors for the buildings?
We're going to be actually submitting the application, and there's about $3 million set aside for this particular grant.
First come, first served.
And we will be putting, submitting applications for all of our public facilities to switch over to LED, and we'll see how far we get with that after the application process, but we're looking forward to making those adjustments. I think we'll get some, I don't know how much we'll get, but we'll see what qualifies for it.
Good, fingers crossed. Today, the mayor, maybe we'll talk about it, went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting, had, had some really good updates from our elected officials, Justin Tyler, were very good. I met with Joe Tassari and Larry Moore to talk just how things are going between Eastvale and Norco, and off-ramps and stuff, and that was actually a really productive, fun meetings with those guys. I went to the League of Cities, and then I had the opportunity to go to Sacramento. Thank you, counsel, for sending me. That was for the cell tower initiative, and I was also with the mayor, Brian, and with the city manager. We had two meetings, one with our Assemblywoman, and one with, today, with Senator Roth's office. I guess the thing I would have to say is there's a lot of confusion. When I watched the meeting up in Sacramento, it was pretty clear, nobody really knew what was in that bill. And what's a little scary is some of the language is within reason, but who determines within reason if you want to beautify or you don't want something 20 feet from somebody's bedroom? The primary concern, and we're working all this out, is that we will lose local control of cell towers. We will lose a revenue stream, and most important for me is that people won't have the opportunity to say no. As some of you know, we've had the opportunities where we've turned down cell towers because the neighbors came and said, hey. There's also some confusion, one of, you got one side saying this will lead to the end of the large cell units and be replaced by the smaller ones. Do they put the apparatus in the trails? If it says outside the right-of-way, does that mean inside the right-of-way? We have no control, the way the bill reads. I went home and I read it, and I went, whoa, we don't have any control here, and I'm very concerned about that. But I'm very happy that the mayor and Brian and Andy are very on top of this, so there's four of us that, that are really watching it. And I wanted to appreciate the mayor, because he's been setting up these meetings that have been really helpful. The one with Assemblywoman Cervantes was incredibly helpful. I also want to compliment the Assemblywoman. One of the things that drives me crazy is when somebody with brain cancer is standing at a podium, you have Assemblymen going like this, and they should not be doing that. Our Assemblywoman was very attentive, and I was very impressed by that. Every once in a while, she'd kind of look, but then she was right back, and so please send her my compliments for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. It's been a busy couple of weeks, I'll tell you that. Yeah, just very briefly, I attended the chamber luncheon today, and we listened to a proposed project by Lansing Company for the Old Wiley Labs property, which was enlightening. Couple of weeks ago, I attended the monthly Chino Desalter Authority Board Meeting, and just a, just a real quick update on that. We have, on total projects, we have completed 10 projects to date. We have five projects in construction, startup, and closeout, and one project in design, and of course, that is the crossing of the Santa Ana River microtunneling project that we've talked about for the last couple of years. Updated total project costs to date is $152 million of projects that we're managing at this time, so it's a, it's a full plate. So with that, we're going to move to City Council Consent Items. Do any council members wish to pull any items?
F and H.
Okay, Kevin. F and H.
Mr. Mayor, I pull G, please.
G only, Ted?
Yes, that's it.
Robin?
E.
E?
Yes, please.
Berwin?
Nothing.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
We'll do approve the rest.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tanner?
Yes.
Grundmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll go alphabetically, so item 2E, Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Chad, this is going to be mostly for you, but I think for whole staff, I'm going to take kind of the scenic tour while I explain why I brought this up. So we started with the app not too long ago for the city, and when I would first put in work orders, I would get little notes and things would come up, hey, we're doing this, or thank you for your work order, or we're going to do this, and there were continual updates. You'll recall, I think at the last council meeting, that I asked for an update on how the app was going, and that was partially because I felt one of my work orders kind of got lost, and then I wasn't getting feedback from the app that I had gotten when we first started. So that brings me to kind of a global outlook at what we're supposed to do as council and what staff is supposed to do. Have any of you read the book, Start with Why? Or are any of you familiar with Simon Sinek? Okay, so if you're not, I'm going to do real short condensed version. In the Start with Why, he talks about the golden circle, and it looks like a target, three concentric circles. In the middle is why, the next string out is how, and then the last one is what. If we look at most businesses, they're going to operate from the outside into the center, so they're going to say, what do you do? How do you do it? And why? So we can say, what do we do? Oh, well, we fix infrastructure, we maintain public facilities, da-da-da-da-da, if we're talking about the city. Well, how do we do that? Well, we send workers out, we pay the bills, so on and so forth. Well, why do you do that? And I think that's where we kind of get a little stuck. Well, because that's our job, that's what we're supposed to do. If we flip it, and we start in the middle, it doesn't matter what department or what position we're in up here. If we start with why, hopefully, all of our answers would be the same. Our why is to serve the residents of the city of Norco. Then you go to how. Well, maybe Gina does the budgets and finances, and then, you know, Chad takes care of infrastructure, and so on and so forth, and then we go to the last one, well, what do you do? Well, I train people, I send people out, so on and so forth. So when I look at the app issue, for me, it's a why. Why do we have the app? Why do we do that? It's because we want to serve the residents, keep them informed, keep them happy, and we all have different modalities and specialties on how we accomplish that. So there's my scenic route to a contract for Lucity, because it is my understanding that the lack of feedback from the app is because the app software and the Lucity software aren't integrating to provide the feedback back to our consumer. In reading the contract, I completely understand why Public Works and now potentially more parts of the city are looking to use it, because if I could, when I'm doing a wedding breakdown, staff time, costs, materials, all that kind of stuff, and it's going to give me a number, this is what it costs you, Robin, to do everything, that's amazing, and I think that's a huge asset to the city. But my concern comes in to the lack of feedback to our customers, which is our resident, through the app. When I looked at what we're paying for, it just talks about the integration development at an hourly rate, and then project management at an hourly rate. My question to you, is there any way, if we do this, to put some pressure on them, to say, our primary goal is to serve our residents, and we need to be able to provide feedback? With that being said, I got an email today, your work order number, blah blah blah, was completed. This email provided by Lucity. So I thought, oh, well, maybe if I click on the number, it'll give me a report, because I've put in several work orders just to see what it was, and it asked me if I wanted to call that number. So now I got an email today that said one of my work orders was done, but I don't know which work order it was, and I just don't think it's as user-friendly as what we started with when we first opened up the app. So my question to you is, can we put some pressure on software designers through this contract to make the two programs communicate with each other?
Short answer is yes, that's already been done, but I guess I should preface the discussion in that the Lucity system was not meant to be a communication tool. It was meant to be a work order system, asset management system. That we did talk with all the vendors, that we did interview, again, can you integrate with outside apps or infrastructure to get the information into Lucity? So we get work orders, so they flow into one repository, which is Lucity. It was never intended to be a dynamic conversation, other than we've received your work order, we can show you it's in progress, or it's now closed. It wasn't meant to be a dynamic of discussion back and forth. The app, to be candid, showed that ability in that it's more of a communication tool, and you're in the app, and you're communicating within the app together with staff, so you're following that program. Lucity doesn't have that ability now to dynamically talk with the app back and forth. It's pushed in, it pushes the information back in a, in a very simple manner. What we've asked them to do is, can they integrate that type of conversation when needed? Again, there's a, there's, keep in mind, that conversation and that type of information is case-by-case basis, based on need, on what the staff determines, maybe what the resident should know about, if we're delayed, if the order parts, if it's maybe two months out because your tree request is going to be done on a master list that, that we send to our arborist, and they eventually get to it in the next two months. There's, there's different things we try to do to communicate that to the residents. So they are already looking at that option to see if, whether it's can be done dynamically, kind of like the app does in itself, and maybe we'll send information how that can be done, or at least sending specialized messages about certain topics to advise the residents that this will be processed in a certain timeframe because of scheduling or something like that, just to give some type of information. Right now, it simply says through Lucity, your work orders are received, but doesn't give a timeframe or not, because that we really want to refrain from, because as Public Works, everything changes every day, so we don't want to overpromise something. But this, what has this done is it's given us accountability to the residents, because now we can document we've gotten your report. Now we, we've received it, it's there, we've received others, so it's a very important tool in that, that it's, it's holding us accountable. Now, where we didn't have that system was, well, how did you get that call? Well, we did. So we are putting that pressure on them. I had the conversation with Lucity today, they're going to see what they're, they can do. We're also going to be working with the app integrator, see what they can do, because they're limited now in that integration, that they actually lose data, because they're not retaining it anymore, and vice versa. So it doesn't mean it can't be done, but this is what we've learned in that process of integrating the two, because we knew from the beginning, they can integrate and they can communicate, but what we didn't realize is the app lost data in that communication. It wasn't going to be a dynamic conversation that the app was offering. The work order system doesn't do that in that same way. We're going to see if they can accomplish that.
Right.
But it does do the rudimentary version of it, where it's, we received it, we've and we finished it. We can talk about the improvements of, can it identify what that work order was, describe it, because maybe it's a person who's got four work orders in, and we can look at those things, and that's good feedback, because again, we're looking for, what does the customer see?
Right.
And how is it difficult? So we are definitely moving on that, and they've actively started that process as of today, to see what can be done.
Okay, so then the only other kind of feedback that I would be looking for as a resident, and particularly as a councilperson, is if I put in a work order and I drive by the same leaky spot in the road for two weeks, and it's progressively getting worse and worse, as a resident, I would just be frustrated. As a councilperson, I see dollar signs now, and potentially more dollar signs, so my outlook has kind of changed a little bit. But I also understand there's dig alerts and different processes that have to take place, and I shouldn't expect Public Works to be out there the next day. But I don't know that most residents understand that, and they're probably where I was before, where you just drive by it for two weeks straight, and you get progressively more irritated and then mad and all that kind of stuff. And so I think, and I feel like the app did at the beginning, hey, this is going to take a couple of days, we got to do- to take a couple of days, we've got to do dig alert, we've got to do this, we've got to do that." Just, again, it goes back to the why and the communication and putting it out there. So, we negate people getting irritated and frustrated, saying, "Well, those city workers, they're not doing anything. I put in a work order." And one work order in particular, I'm sure was put in by several people. So, to kind of negate that, like, somebody goes by, "Well, I'm not going to put it in, because I'm sure Johnny down the street put it in," and that whole thing, where I think the level of communication, if it was stepped up just a bit, would negate almost all of that to a certain point. So, that's some of what I'm looking for, you know, as well.
And I understand that. The difficulty, to be candid, is tracking work orders that we may have got in, it's a little leak, and again, we do the dig alerts, et cetera. We might think we're going to get to it in five days, which is that kind of turnaround time. But water main break happened, some issue happened, where we're now digging a hotspot on, because trees fell down, and now it's two weeks later. It's tough to go back and remember which ones, even though the system has it, you're getting new stuff in every day that you're trying to categorize. So, it's, I don't make it an excuse, but it, we get tons of information every day. And it keeps us accountable, saying, "This one's now 10 days old, 11 days old, 14 days old." And we review it. It's just a matter of, where can we fit this priority? And I know it's irritating for everybody, including myself, when you see that little leak keep going. But if you can live a day in our shoes, we have so many things that are much higher priority than that little leak, I hate to call that what it is, in our world, versus the other things we're handling. But it's all important, it's just we're limited in staff and everything else. But this process and the system has made our, changed our world, as far as being able to be accountable, getting information to the employees, being able to finish it right then and there, communicating to supervisor of an issue, or if a follow-up needs to be done, then they can immediately get that to someone else. They're not waiting to the end of the day for someone to communicate. The financial side of it, we have the pictures. So, it's an amazing system. The app has been a huge part of that, of communicating that into us fluidly. It comes in, so we can be more responsive. So, it's working as well as we expected it to do. It can only get better as we learn the frustrating parts of it for both the customer side and us. So, the feedback we get, whether it's from council, staff using it, or even the public of what's maybe not being there, is very valuable. What we probably won't ever eliminate is point people seeing, "It's still there, why isn't it done?" Because that's the tough part to communicate. Everybody is, it's just about the priority of what else is in the queue. And it changes every day. But it's not that it's not important.
Yeah, no, I understand. So, just that feedback as we go forward, because I just didn't want to say on consent and not give some feedback and some perception as a customer and a councilperson. So, all right, thank you.
I have a question on that same line, that with this, not only with Public Works, but building and safety and code enforcement would be integrated with this?
Yes, in the second phase, code enforcement and building and safety are being integrated along with finance.
And one of my concerns is that with code enforcement, that the same thing, if a resident puts through a complaint on the app, and it's not acknowledged. You know, we don't need to explain the situation, but at least we should have that acknowledgement and that further communication. Are those departments being looked at at this time? You said they started today with the Public Works dynamic of communication. Where are we with, say, maybe if we have building and safety issues or code enforcement issues, is that being looked at also?
Yeah, citywide, the intent is to have every department that might receive requests or complaints that they must need to respond to, will be integrated into Lucidity. Right now, code enforcement is only operating in the app world, where there can be that dynamic discussion. As an example, that is one department where you really can't give information, because it's an in-person complaining about, or let us know about an issue. Javier cannot tell them more than, "We're reviewing it, we're in process."
And that's what I'm asking, is just the basic acknowledgement.
Yeah, I don't know what Javier's doing in, as far as in the app right now, but that would be the expectation, even if it was in Lucidity, that there would be an acknowledgement. And Lucidity would automatically give that to them. Your information or complaint has been received and is being reviewed. Now, they may, again, as you know, code enforcement cases can take weeks, months, years, and everybody wonders what's going on. That's a tougher situation, of how do we communicate? It's just ongoing. Because we can't give them details about why, what we're stuck on, you know, where we're at in that process.
And I'm sure a lot of the residents understand that. And I'll take that back, too, is just acknowledge that I did something.
Well, and let me jump in and say that through the app, all of the cases that are turned into the app are acknowledged, because they're taken out of the app and moved into the processing portion of it. And it's an automatic acknowledgement to the one who turned it in, that it's been received.
Right. So, we're good today. If we go with this, are we back into that situation where we lose that acknowledgement, or we don't know that at this point in time?
No, it currently acknowledges every request that's submitted. Lucidity sends that customer an email, telling them that their work request or complaint has been received. It does that now, no matter what.
The app will also do that. If it came in through the app, the app will say that it was received, and it will say "processing." Then it will be forwarded into Lucidity, and they may get a second message. It's just, it won't come back through the app.
Right. But when you say "may," it may get a second notice. We don't know that yet?
No, it gets that notice.
It does. Once it goes into Lucidity, it'll get it. The more detailed follow-up conversation that Chad was talking about earlier, that's the one we're working on, as far as being able to do that. But as far as the acknowledgement that your complaint in regards to code enforcement, if they submit it through the app, they'll be receiving an acknowledgement. They receive a second acknowledgement once it integrates with Lucidity. That hasn't happened yet.
All right. Just to clarify, because it's actually a little bit incorrect. We have two phases right now. There's the app, and that's producing information. Right now, the app is only integrated with Public Works. So, all Public Works related stuff goes into Lucidity. Lucidity sends a message saying, "Your work request has been received," and then provides updates of where that progress is. For example, currently, it's for parks or code enforcement, it's only in the world of the app. So, the app is sending a message. When you integrate into Lucidity, there's not two messages, there's only one, because that causes confusion. You don't want one the app sent it. So, Brian's half-correct in that the app will send one if we're not integrated in Lucidity, and that's what currently parks and code enforcement would do, and do now, that you get an acknowledgement just through the app. Through Public Works, it comes from Lucidity. We use the email that every customer has to provide, and it tells them, "Hey, we received your work request or work order." And when we integrate parks into this system, they're starting to use the system out internally, when we're ready, we'll, again, filter them into Lucidity. It will no longer get an acknowledgement from the app, it'll come from Lucidity. All updates will come from Lucidity about what's the progress, has it been completed, et cetera. And again, the goal is to try to maybe get a more dynamic mechanism, to have broader description of either what was completed, when it was completed, or what issues that may force that work order to be pushed off to what date. And that's what we're working on now. But no matter what the issue is, it's supposed to be getting acknowledgement, whether it's from the app or from Lucidity, there's always an acknowledgement, and there should always be, "It's been completed." If we're using the app, if the person's closing in the app, it will tell them a message. When we close our work order, it automatically closes the work order in Lucidity, and it notifies the customer, "Your work order has been completed." So, the messaging is there in either case for either software. And we're trying to make sure it's always there for the customer during this integration. But everything will eventually be in Lucidity. Every work order, every code enforcement case that's being reviewed will be tracked in that software.
Okay. And I support the efficiency of it. My concern is that we still don't have the communications. And if I understand you correctly, that's what they're looking at right now.
They're looking for, yes.
Improve our communications.
More dynamic communication.
Right. And we don't know that. So, what are the impacts if I was to say, "I'd like to continue this item until we find out the impacts of that communication, if it can be done or not?"
Well, whether it can be done or not, I'd say, I wouldn't continue the item, because this is the asset management system we're working with. To go backwards and not use it, we'd have the same issue with any other asset management system. Because it's, again, they're not designed to have a dynamic conversation back and forth. But it doesn't mean it can't be done, and they're looking to that, see what could be done. The question to be asked is, if they couldn't do it in a way that the app is doing it now in that way, would the council want to scrap an asset management system for the sake of an app? That's your choice. But you're going to have the same results of starting over with an asset management system that potentially can't have that same dynamic discussion. I'm confident that the existing setup, at a minimum, provides communication. It just may not be in the way that the customer has gotten used to having and appreciates. But it doesn't mean they also can't communicate to us and contact us and say, "What's the status of my work order?" We can all look it up and say, "Here's the status, here's what's going on, because in the notes internally, we're putting down what the issues are, we're waiting on dig alert, we're waiting on the parts to be received, et cetera, et cetera." It's just not, it's a difficult thing to expect us to go back, take that message every time, communicate to the residents, so they know what we're waiting on. Because again, we're trying to get to every other thing that we're, their aspect is to do.
And I understand that. Thank you, Chad.
Appreciate it.
Ted, any comments? Kevin? Robin, anything else? Or do you want to make a motion? Whichever you're comfortable with.
Sorry, just as a reminder, again, I want us to look at that middle circle first, and remember that, you know, customer satisfaction is the most important thing for me, and making sure we're serving the residents. So, please, 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 put some pressure on the software designers to make this work, because I'm going to be watching it. So, with that, I move to approve.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Cheryl. Item F, Kevin?
So, Andy, we had some discussion on this, and I gave you some questions. Did you have an opportunity to look at those?
Absolutely.
Great.
To start off, we have an informal presentation by the finance officer. And following that, we will address the questions that you submitted.
Thank you. Just to preamble, I just had some questions from a resident that was concerned, and I gave the questions to Andy, and it's not that we're questioning anything, we just want more clarification as to where we put our money and investments, that's all.
Definitely. I actually have those questions, and I'll be replying to them.
Perfect. Thank you.
As a result of conversations a few months ago regarding our investment policy, we have made adjustments to our quarterly investment report, modifications. We've included a section to the staff report that identifies the investments we are currently making within the city. If you go to the back, you'll see that we are currently investing in United States Government Agency Securities, Commercial Paper, Money Market Mutual Funds, emphasis on money market, and Local Agency Investment Fund, which is a state, our state investment fund. The majority of our money is actually sitting there, our active money. And additionally, what we've done is, on the backup, you'll notice a new column on attachment three. In the middle, it says "Investment Policy." We have entered into that particular column, the category that that investment falls under that I just mentioned. And our investment policy is available to review overall as well. But this gives you a general idea of how those investment policies relate to our investment, how the policy relates to our investments currently. And just to start off the beginning of the conversation, we do invest conservatively. And I'll discuss with you, just briefly, what government investing is about. And first of all, we are required by state, government state code, to invest accordingly. Our objective of our portfolio is safety, liquidity, and yield in that order. So, when we invest a dollar, we expect a dollar back. And after investing that dollar, we also want it to have available for us for cash flow, for CIP projects, for payroll and everything. So, we want that to be liquid, we want to be able to get to it. In looking at our portfolio overall, our ultimate goal is to ladder our investments. So, items will mature at a certain rate, so it's available. We are not allowed to invest longer than five years, as a result, by the state government code. So, we have to be conservative. We currently invest in treasuries and agencies. So, they are backed by the guaranteed security of the federal government. And with those investments, we expect, under safety, liquidity, and yield, to receive our dollar back, and hopefully some interest rate. Of course, being fixed income securities, if the interest rates go up, if we were to sell that investment in that marketplace, we would lose the value. But we don't. We hold to the end, and we get the full maturity, as well as the interest earned on that investment. So, in addressing the questions that were provided, the interested resident asked specific questions geared towards whether we invest in mutual funds, which is a common item for us as individuals to invest in, whether it's your retirement portfolio. Looking at that, you want to look at administrative costs, you compare your mutual fund choices to see what's the best deal. And it might be an index fund, it might be conservative, and a bond-related fund. So, most of these questions, and I'll go through them one by one. The first question is, what is the total amount paid in commissions by the city of Norco to brokers or fund managers? We actually don't have brokerage fees. So, when we purchase our investment for $2 million, that's what we're spending, is $2 million, there are absolutely no brokerage fees that we pay. What was the, and we don't have fund managers, because we aren't necessarily in mutual funds. What was the total amount paid in front-end and back-end loads? And as I said earlier, we do not invest in mutual funds. So, we don't have back-end or front-end loads. What are the names of the brokerage firms or mutual fund firms used by Norco? Well, we don't have mutual fund firms, but we do have individuals that assist us investing, which are Piper Jeffrey and Wells Fargo Institutional Securities. What are the names and the five-letter designations for each of the funds owned by Norco? And that question I didn't quite understand, so I don't have a response for that. We don't, again, own mutual funds. What are the expense ratios for each funds? And we don't have mutual funds. So, as a result, there's no answer to that. And what were the total 12B-1 expenses paid in 2016? And this fee actually is used to pay for mutual fund distribution costs. And again, we don't have mutual funds. What is the amount invested in each fund today? In terms of what we invest in, that's in the report that we submitted. But again, we don't invest in mutual funds. What is a dollar amount returned by fund minus costs since Norco purchased the investments? We don't invest in mutual funds, but all our information is on the treasury report. Are Norco funds actively managed or indexed? And we don't invest in equity funds like that, no mutual funds. What are the risks of the funds Norco owns? Of course, we don't own mutual funds, but we do have risk. We invest in treasuries and agencies. So, potentially, there is, well, because they're federally insured and federally guaranteed, I should say, in the sense it's backed by the federal government, I'll say that, there is virtually nonexistence. That's one of the key risks that you have. In terms of our interest rate risk, like I mentioned before, there is that possibility, if you were to sell prematurely in a rising interest rate market, that we would lose principal or lose interest and the value, but we don't do that. Then, final question, what person makes the final decision on when and what to buy or sell? We, basically, it's the city treasurer, and Andy and I do discuss all investments, and we move forward accordingly. Everything that I just mentioned is mentioned in our investment policy that was just adopted. And I believe that covers most of the questions. If you have any questions, or if Andy has anything else to include?
Yes, I'll add that most of the questions that are raised here pertain to investments outside of the public domain. Again, the city's investment is guided by the provisions of the investment policy, which are derived from the government code. The city does not invest in stocks, equities. We are not allowed to do that. The city does not invest in stocks, equities, we are not allowed to do that by the government code. We are not allowed to invest in typical mutual funds. Part of the government code was actually put in place based on what happened to Orange County. And the, as you know, Orange County went into a lot of speculative investments. As a result of that, when the market turned against them, they basically lost a lot of money, as well as a lot of cities that invested in that pool. So what the state law has done is provide strict guidelines with respect to how public agencies can invest. And Gina mentioned at the beginning of the discussion, the concept, all the objectives of a public agency investment. The overriding priority number one is protection of your principal. That means you put in $1 at the, at the beginning, you come up, you come out with at least $1 on the end. Secondly, the next overriding objective is liquidity, means, again, the municipal governments are not in the business to trade securities. You are investing what is considered hydro funds, meaning these are short-term funds that the city doesn't need right away, but in order to invest those, you have to invest them in securities or instruments that ensures that liquidity. What that means is, if we want that money tomorrow to do water line projects or to do street improvements, that those funds are readily available to, to be used. And because of that need to preserve liquidity, you obviously cannot invest in instruments that are over five years in duration. And finally, if you can meet those criteria, number one, which is protect your principal, and secondly, ensure that you, your investments are liquid, then if you can earn some interest or investment earnings, that's, that's a plus. That's the thought that you look at. So on the basis of that, again, our investments strictly based on those restrictions, and a lot of the questions here pertain to mutual fund investments, which, again, even though the portfolio allows for mutual funds, is for money market mutual funds that are denominated in government securities. With that, again, in terms of the breakdown of our investments, currently, most of our investment, if you look at the schedule, a summary of our investment portfolio.
What page, Andy?
This will be attachment number one. So what that attachment shows is that there are two classifications of investment that the city holds. The first category of investment are those investments that are made pursuant to the provisions of, of the city's investment policy. These are what we call, again, operating funds, okay? And currently, 5% of that investment is in cash, basically, to meet our daily cash flow needs, and that's $2.8 million. The remainder, which is 94%, is invested in local agency investment fund. This is a fund that is operated by the state treasurer's office, and that's where 94% of the investment currently are. The reason we have chosen this investment vehicle precisely is, as you know, going back to 2008, 2009, interest rates started falling rapidly with respect to government agency securities or treasury bonds, which are the things we, we are allowed to invest. So to the extent that the local agency investment fund meets all the objectives, but yet provides a better return to the city, and therefore, that is where we have invested. Currently, the average return on those investments is just over 1%. If you look about two years ago, maybe three years ago, those were basically about half a percent or less. Again, we are not chasing returns, that's not the objective. The key is that we invest in those instruments that are, that are authorized by the investment policy as well as the government code. And with that, as interest rates obviously starts to creep up a little bit, interest rates on treasury bills or treasury bonds, depending on the maturity, whether it's one year maturity, or two-year maturity, or three-year maturity, those are beginning to go up. And so over time, we are looking to move some of these funds currently in the local agency investment fund to buy individual treasury securities, provided, again, we invest them so that when we need the money, we can readily access, access those funds. The local agency investment fund, the big advantage that provides is we can withdraw the, the funds within a 24-hour notice in order to meet our cash flow needs, while at the same time generating what is a very reasonable return on the investments. And the second category of investments, these are investments that are associated with bond proceeds. These investments are not covered by the city's investment policy, however, the enabling bond documents outlines where these types of investments can, can be, can be made. And those, again, if you look at the detailed investment schedule, then you will see that we do have some investments that are bond proceed related, which are invested in specific individual government agency securities. With that, we can answer any specific questions.
Yeah, I just have, I've got a couple. First off, how strict is a policy? One of the questions that came was, it's just a policy. How strict is the policy as opposed to the hard and fast rule in terms of investing?
The policy is very strict. City investment cannot deviate from the provisions of the policy. As part of our annual audit, the auditors do look at our investment portfolio and make sure that they comply to the provisions in the investment policy as well as the government code. And part of what we have here in the report shows how each one of those investment, again, complies with the provisions in the code.
The code referring to the state code, federal code?
No, state code.
Right.
As well as the city's investment.
So our policy is, actually, that's my next question, the policy is based on the state code?
That our investment policy is...
And it's overseen by somebody that comes in to make sure that we're following the state code and our policy, the policy of the city falls as state.
That's correct. And one of the things that Gina pointed out when she made the presentation is, for every item in the portfolio, by the way, this is a complete listing of all the securities and cash that is in the portfolio, and we have added that column that shows what section of the investment policy each one of this, this investment complies to, the, the, the section that gives us the authority to invest in, in these specific securities.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve if there's no other questions.
I just have one.
You do.
Smaller question, and this was, Andy and I had talked about it earlier, was on the portfolio details, that I noticed under our waste management category that we were running a deficit of $312,000. And I guess my question is, is that offset by deposits or checks in transit? Or is there another reason we have that deficit in our portfolio?
On June 30th, we are very cognizant of when we receive monies in and where we place those monies at June 30th, when we earn them, as well as expenditures. In this case, we booked this particular expenditure as of June 30th, when the cash was received in July.
Okay.
So we're actually going to make a correction on that.
Okay. That one seemed larger than usual. Thank you, Gina. Cheryl, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy, very much. Thank you, Gina. Thank you.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 2G. Ted?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for listening. You know, normally, when we get these requests for, we, Sacramento, and not picking on Justin Bowie there, but it seems like our legislators always want to tack on here, get a dollar here, get a dollar there, onto any fees, and we, as consumers, ended up paying them all the time, because that's just what they do, and then the money doesn't go to the right place, it gets carried all over. But I'm glad that this came forward, because I really want to support this, because I think this is one thing that I don't mind spending the extra dollar for, and I'm glad that we get to approve this. I just want the residents to know that, like most of us, we don't appreciate when things get tacked on and the monies don't go to the right place. Having worked for the sheriff's department for a number of years, and working actually with the raid team before, trust me, these guys did good work. So I just wanted to note that, Mr. Mayor, that I'm fully in support of that, along with the other council members, because this money is actually going for a good reason. With that...
Thank you, Ted.
I think we have somebody with a presentation on this, from the sheriff's department, correct?
Lieutenant?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, and members of city council. At this point, I'd like to introduce the CHP Lieutenant Mario Lucio, and Riverside Sheriff's Sergeant Sean Brown from the Raid Task Force.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and council members and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for just a few moments about the Raid Task Force. I am the commander, Mario Lucio, I'm a lieutenant with the California Highway Patrol. This is Sergeant Sean Brown, who serves as our supervisor. The task force has been serving Riverside County for 23 years now, we're a very productive unit, however, we are struggling a bit financially. We are having trouble paying our bills, we are short-staffed, but we continue to work hard, because that's our mission, to serve the people behind us. We want to protect their vehicles, we want to bring those that steal their vehicles to justice, and that's our mission. I have a very brief PowerPoint I'd like to go through, just to tell you what we're about, and to tell you a little bit about AB 767. Like every good organization, we do have a mission statement, and what we're, we want to do is, we want to reduce vehicle theft, and we want to go after the professional vehicle thief, and that's how we supplement your police department. We have investigators that are highly trained, we have equipment that they do not have, and we have a whole team that is able to target certain areas when we identify problems. This is the makeup of the task force. Currently, we have 10 detectives, we are two positions short due to funding issues at this time. We also have two non-uniform members that help us complete our mission. We have an executive committee made up of chiefs of police and department heads that oversees our spending, our personnel, and they govern us and guide us in the right Here's some of our responsibilities. Like I mentioned, our goal is to supplement your police department and the 27 other cities within the county. There's 10 of us, we're spread thin, but we do our best to answer every phone call and get the appropriate help out and complete investigations throughout the entire county. We are funded through the Vehicle Code Section 9250.14. Currently, $1 per every registered vehicle goes specifically, as was mentioned, directly to the investigation, prosecution, and deterrence of vehicle theft crimes. The money is split equally between the task force and the DA's office for prosecution of vehicle theft crimes. If you look in 93 and 94, the task force specifically brought in $750,000, currently, only $957,000. So as you can imagine, operating costs have increased significantly, salary and benefits of our investigators have also increased during that time. The task force is currently funding each position at a rate of 70%. We've recently had to make a reduction of 10% in order to pay our bills. AB 767 is, it was approved in 2013, assigned by the governor, and it's a pending resolution by the county board of supervisors. And there's the verbiage. In short, each board of supervisors has been granted the authority to approve of an additional $1 specifically for vehicle theft-related crimes and the task force and the DA's office. There is another portion that addresses commercial vehicles, however, the task force is not interested in increasing commercial vehicle fees at this time. Currently, there are 12 other counties in the state that have already put provisions in, in place to receive the additional funding. Some of the local counties would be Los Angeles and San Bernardino. In 2016, there were 11,920 thefts within Riverside County. That's an increase of nearly 6% from the previous year. Going back a year prior, we had an increase of 18%. So our, we're going in the wrong direction, is what I'm trying to say, and we need some additional help. Here are the top five counties when it comes to the number of vehicle thefts in California. You see, we rank number five. The top three counties all have put in provisions to receive that additional funding. The county there at number four has not, and I can tell you that their vehicle theft rate went up about 10% from 2015 to 2016. Here's just a five-year snapshot of the trends within the county. As you can note there on the top line, vehicle theft has been increasing year to year. Bottom right-hand corner there, one vehicle stolen within the county every 44 minutes. Here's the good news of the presentation. If your vehicle gets stolen, there's a great chance that it will be recovered. I'm proud of this number, because it shows that our officers and deputies out there, they're doing a good job finding stolen vehicles. The 89.8% recovery rate within the county is consistent with the state rate. In 2015, the metropolitan statistical area that Riverside is involved in ranked number nine nationally. This chart here gives you a vehicle theft rate. The national average was 220 vehicle thefts per 100,000 residents. In 2015, we had 556 vehicle thefts per 100,000 residents. And here's our current numbers, 2016, most recent numbers. We've moved up to the number five spot at 679 vehicle thefts per 100,000 residents. And again, this is a national statistic, ranked number five nationally. Now, these numbers I'm very proud of, because it shows our task force is out there doing, doing what they're supposed to be doing. I'm proud of the recoveries, 533 vehicles recovered at a recovery value of over $5 Now, here's what we want to do with the increased funding. We want to increase the reimbursement rate to our participating agencies to 80%. We want to add another full-time supervisor and additional task force members. By adding and increasing the size of the team, we can better serve the county, we can reduce the vehicle theft rate, and we could hold those accountable that get themselves involved in this type of criminal activity. And in yellow there, that's what I beat into our guys, we want to protect our residents. This is a quality-of-life issue, as every property crime is. We want to hold those accountable. If you're going to go out and steal a vehicle, we want to catch you, and we want to make sure that you do some time.
Just some numbers for last year, there were 116 vehicles stolen in Norco, and this year, so far through July 1, were about 60 vehicles so far, so we're kind of keeping pace with last year's numbers, so there's a little bit of...
Does council have any questions? Comments? Appreciate all you do, sorry to see this is one of the areas that California, once again, leads the nation, and I just, you know, I get frustrated with knowing that you guys are out there making the arrests, and they're back out there the next day.
That is true.
Yeah, hence where the problem lies. I certainly support the increase to help you further do your job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment, a good job you guys do, that's, that's quite a impressive number there, the number of arrests you made last year and everything. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted, you want to make a motion?
I'm ready.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Portem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Kevin, you pulled item 2H?
Yeah, just briefly, Andy, if you could just describe what their function will be.
Basically, what we're looking for is a government-type financial advisors that will help us, assist us to review our outstanding debt obligations, to identify those bond issues where we have opportunity to refund them for interest savings. We believe particularly there are two areas that can be quickly done. We have CFD 2001-1 that is eligible for a refund, and given the low-interest rate environment that we have today, if we refund those bonds, it will provide debt service savings to the residents that live in that district. Similarly, we'll be looking at one of our other big issues, which is the 2009 Revenue Enterprise Bonds. This is the bonds that we are issued to finance improvements to the water and sewer system. That's a big issue. When we get to refund those bonds, we believe we can refund them at interest rates that are lower than the current rates that we are paying. And in order to do this work, we require assistance from municipal financial advisors to help us with that work. There is some additional work that needs to be done in terms of hiring some additional professionals to put a team, a financing team, together. But this will be the first step in that process.
Thank you. Unless you have a motion to approve.
I have a question.
Robin?
Gina, I had a quick question, and this may be nitpicky, but as I'm reading through the proposals, there's some that are on letterhead and look super official, and then there are some that don't. And so like I've learned that like in planning stuff, it's acceptable that contracts are handwritten and that kind of stuff, which I didn't know until I asked them questions. So is this typically acceptable to get letters and stuff not on professional letterhead?
It is not typical. In this particular situation, we made the decision to include this individual in the group. He is not...
Well, because there's two of them that are not on official letterhead. Let's see. So the first one is Urban Futures.
Well, I have to say, in terms of the whole packet on this particular one, I can show you the entire packet. It's definitely professionally done, and everything else has the logo and associated with the company.
Okay.
Basically, what Gina is saying here, what you're seeing is one page out of a proposal. And that proposal starts with a letterhead, and this is one page copied off of that proposal, for this particular proposal.
Okay. And three of them are firms and one is an individual.
Right, so the last letter is from an individual, correct?
Yeah. And again, that individual is just being put in the pool here on a standby business. Basically, what we are recommending are two, which are the first two.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Just for reference, because even on the signatures at this point in time, and even it's electronic, you can still have a signature. So that's just something that kind of caught my eye and I wanted to...
I can share with you the full packet as well.
Yeah. In addition, just for what it's worth, Urban Futures is one of the ones you're talking about, has actually done financial advising work from the city since 1964.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Gina, who, and I thought it was Urban Futures. It's either Beaumont or Banning, that one of their financial advising companies?
Yeah, no, it's not Urban Futures.
Okay. Do you know who that is, or at least tell me that it's not part of this group?
No, it's not. And actually, the, how do I say this, Alan Kapanakis, who was also the city manager, was the one who provided the bulk of the financing advice. As a sidebar, someday we'll talk about what I think about what has occurred there and how the DA has proceeded, but that's another story.
All right. Let's be clear, it's Beaumont we're talking about.
Yeah, but it's not part of...
Yeah.
...these proposals.
It's Banning or Beaumont. It's Beaumont.
Robin, are you good? Kevin, make your motion. We have a second?
We don't have a second. Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Portem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
By the way, for Gina's benefit, I'm so old that I used to play golf with Bill Fieldman and used to socialize a lot with Larry Rolapp and his wife. And one of their analysts, is their famous analyst, is Loretta Sanchez.
Thank you for that, John. Let's move into public comments. Cheryl?
Christina Spangler.
So now we know that John's old and he graduated school. Hi, Christina.
Hi.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
My name is Christina, and I live on Raymar Lane. I have to get this way closer, sorry. I'm here today to express my concern about the multiple waterline breaks on Valley View between Third and Third. That little leak turns into, in 2003, an 18-inch water main broke on Valley View. We had an estimated 3 million gallons of water come through our houses and our properties, resulting in six houses ruined and over $1 million in damage, I'm guessing, several lawsuits and two years living in a trailer in a house that was gutted. So we all thought, great, this could never happen again. We're safe now. Wrong. The next few years, we had one major and a few small leaks resulting in more damage to the street and the houses. In June, we had two more breaks in two days. The second break hit Mike Hanlon's house, which was a total loss on the flooring, the two feet of walls, furniture, and cabinets. This was the second flood to Mike's house since 2003, and that's not counting how many times the property has been flooded. Like I said, no one ever thought this could happen over four times in the same neighborhood, but it has. So as you can see, the law of average does not apply to our street. It's only a matter of time till the next break. Given the money the city has paid out to repair the same houses over and over, it seems very logical that you would seriously start finding funds to fix this section of the street. Each time the city floods our street, it brings more dirt down and raises the street level so that even on a good day, the properties do not drain properly. The city has never cleaned up the previous mess from the last three floods, and I'm guessing they have no intention of doing it this time either. As some of you may know, sometime in 2002, the city brought in crushed asphalt and laid it down on a private road, which also raised the street level. The answer we get when these issues have been raised is this is a private road. Then why did you lay the asphalt down, and why do you not clean up your mess after each flood? This is your mess, and it should not, we should not have to clean up to the city's lack of responsibility on maintaining the main lines. The last thing is, you need to educate your staff on dealing with homeowners. The standard answer is, this is a private road and the city has nothing to do with it. Call your homeowner's insurance. First of all, 99% of insurance companies will not cover an accidental discharge of water off the property. This is a city waterline. It is the city's responsibility, and past lawsuits, I think, have proven that. Some of our new homeowners on the street were in a state of confusion when given the fact that the city works told them that you're on your own, luckily or unluckily. Mike and I have lived this nightmare a few times since 2003 and could help the other owners. Anyway, please, we're asking you to address this. This is four times in 10 years. So we think as a street...
Kevin, any more to...
Yeah, I do. Can I keep going? All right.
Don't drag it on too long.
I won't.
Okay.
Let's see. I was lucky enough to have Berwin's number and used it. The staff would blow off the owners and offered no help. Berwin had to intervene, spoke with council members and the city manager, arranged for a city insurance agent to come and evaluate. The agent arrived at 7:00. The flood was around 11:30. Mind you, the houses are now sitting in water soaking up the walls. The answer, unfortunately, we're finding out, is fix your house and sue the city for reimbursement. The bottom line is, the city needs to be proactive and mitigate the potential damages. You know, we see other stuff like, I guess, Yvette on Corridon had to be involved in media. We don't want to have to do that. So we need your help. We're asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Hi, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Hanlon, and I've been a resident here since 1986. I bought my home. I moved in in 87. I live at 1527 Raymar Lane. And on July 28, 11:30 in the morning, my home was flooded due to a main water break on Valley View Street east of my home, and the water and mud stormed down Raymar Lane through my property and my home before the city workers could shut the water off. I had to call a restoration company to come out and gut my home, and I did file a claim with the city the following day. This is three weeks later, and I'm still waiting to hear from someone, anyone, for my next options. This is the second time this has happened in the past 14 years. The same identical pipe burst at the same location on Valley View, and at that time, the city was responsible for excessive damage to six homes on Raymar Lane. That's a lot of money. My reason for being here tonight is to ask why the city of Norco cannot find resources to permanently fix and/or repair the underground water lines rather than put a Band-Aid on these pipes that burst when they occur. On Monday, July 27, a pipe broke about 40 yards south of the pipe that broke that damaged my home. The following day, my neighbor spoke with a city worker at the same location on Valley View. She asked what he was doing, and he replied, fixing a leak. She asked if a crew was coming out, and he replied, he didn't want to bring people out on overtime. The following day is when the pipe burst, gutting my home. In the past 30 years, I've had a good life living here in Norco, raising my horses and my dogs, and the opportunity to bring my children out here, and now my grandchildren, to another lifestyle other than they have in Orange County. Horse Town USA does garner respect around horse nation. When I say I live in Old Norco, Old Town Norco, people know exactly what I mean. In my humble opinion, unless, well, in my humble opinion, unless we put more resources into the infrastructure of Old Norco, we're doomed to make the same mistakes over and over again, which is what Einstein called insanity. I just hope the city council puts more thought and resources into Old Norco, especially when it comes to streets and the plumbing. Thank you very much, and my best wishes to you and your families.
Thank you. Good evening, Pat.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and citizens in the audience. I'm here to invite you to our town hall meeting that's coming up Monday, the 24th of July. It's 6:30. Rural is happy to host, and we have a full agenda with legislative reports. Councilmember Grunmeyer will be giving us a council update, and we're going to have a report on the fireworks enforcement results. And David and I were out of the city for the 4th of July up near Stockton, just listening to explosions everywhere from our hotel room. It was very sad to come home and read the paper where some eight- and nine-year-old boys in San Bernardino County had lost a hand and other burns and things. So I'm hoping things are improving with prevention here. Also, Kelly Newton is going to be giving us the Norco Mobile app tutorial. I'm glad, because I still not on the app, so I don't know what to do with it. And then Chad's going to be giving us cross-lot drainage, and it sounds like that's an important item today, and trail maintenance. And I noticed that driving around town, boy, a lot of our properties, and I don't understand this, if you take pride in your own front lawn, Wyatt stops at the trail fence, and you don't realize that trash and those weeds out there on the other 12 feet is your responsibility. So hopefully, we can get that information out to the local citizens. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Justin Dwell from Assemblymember Cervantes's office.
Good evening, Justin.
Evening, Mayor, council.
Again.
Yes, likewise. A long time no see. So just brief legislative update, as usual, as many, I'm sure many of you know, the cap-and-trade legislation was voted on earlier this week. Assemblymember Cervantes abstained from voting on either of the cap-and-trade bills. She was concerned that it didn't adequately address the interests of the 60th Assembly District, and so that's why she abstained. Her bills have seen a lot of movement in the Senate in the past couple of weeks. Last month, in June, 12 of her bills passed the Assembly, House of Origin, and they are having movement in the Senate and have passed in their respective policy committees onto the Appropriations Committee in the Senate. A few of those are AB 91, her bill that would make the use of carpool lanes in Riverside County more flexible, AB 193, which would establish a program to provide rebates for the purchase of used high-efficiency vehicles, 296, which would create a Women's Veterans Health Task Force within CalVet, AB 863, which would require the Strategic Growth Council to include local entrepreneurs when selecting projects to receive funding, as well as AB 1553, which would make more small businesses eligible for the California Americans with Disabilities Act Capital Access Loan Program. So those are all in Senate appropriations among several others. That's it on the legislative side. We do have an upcoming event. We are hosting another senior scam stopper at the Corona Public Library on August 18, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. So do come out to that if you missed our previous ones. And that is it, unless there are any questions? Yes. Uh-huh.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jeff Cahann.
Good evening, Jeff.
Yes, somebody almost mistook me for someone else today, so...
Okay.
I am council and residents. I am, like my friend Pat, extended an invitation. I am here to invite you all to the concert in the park on Friday in two days. With the Day of the Cowboy being the next day, you can come and get your cowboy on and get in the mood with Western Express. And then, just as a reminder, I think you've already informed Councilman Bash that he is the presenter.
You're okay for Friday?
So we'll just need you to make a decision for the last two concerts. On August 4, we have Heart of Leo, and on August 11, we have a Journey Tribute Band. And that, we're halfway through our concert series, and I don't have any qualitative proof, but everybody seems to think that this is our biggest turnout summer, if not in many years ever. So I'm proud of that. I'm glad to see that the residents are coming out and enjoying a good, fun, family time at the park. We want to thank all of our sponsors, because we can't do it without them. So please come out Friday and get ready for... So please come out Friday and get ready for Day of the Cowboy the next day. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Now Brian and your commission have done great with the concerts and we'll try to figure out someone that wants to emcee the Journey Concert because I know Robin's not a fan.
So he, he does the last one. So who does the second to the last one?
Going to be a surprise.
Okay, so I just worry about this one.
Yes.
I was misinformed by the mayor before.
It won't be the first time. Cheryl.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Thank you. How much time will you need, Berwin? Let's go ahead and take a short break. Okay, let's move into item 5A Legislative Matters Ordinance Number 1023, second reading. John?
Yep.
We have a motion, a second, Cheryl.
Is that a motion by Mayor Protem Hoffman? Okay. Councilmembers Hanna, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Public hearings, item 6A.
Yes, I will take that, Mr. Mayor.
For the fire chief, thank you, Andy.
Yes, this is a resolution asking for city council's approval to allow city staff to recover the costs that are associated with, with abatement on vacant lots. The property owners that have been identified after being notified by the city failed to abate their property on a timely basis and, and therefore city staff had to hire, fire department staff had to hire a contractor to go out and abate the weeds on this property. And now the purpose of this resolution is for you to authorize city, city staff to invoice the property owners for the cost of the abatement, including 100% administrative fee that is added on to that cost of abatement. There are two parcels that were abated and that needs to be invoiced. And if they don't pay the invoices, this land will be placed on their property and they will have to pay that through the property tax payment. Out of the eight parcels that were abated, six of them are repeat offenders. They've been here year after year. With that, that is the, all the information that we, we have and we are asking for your approval to allow city staff to invoice them and all place of land on their property if they fail to pay for, for the invoices.
Thank you, Andy. Does council have any questions, staff?
Yes.
Berwin?
Why don't we put the address of these places on there instead of the address where the property owner lives? Because I drive by, these places got lots of weeds. I turn them in on the out. So why, if we had them on here, then would not be turning them in every day, every week.
I did not get that question, I'm sorry.
Instead of the APN, put the property address?
Okay. I don't know if that's any law.
In addition to the APN.
Yeah, to the APN. I, I don't know if that's allowed by law, we can do that. We do have, we do have that information, but it's, it's the location. It's not included in your staff report.
Yeah, but, but there's no reason why we can't have the property address just listed as information.
Free business, you drive by, so why, we should have the address listed on here.
Yeah, I do have the addresses. The staff has that information and we're glad to provide that if there are no legal restrictions to doing that.
Thank you.
Andy, I know we do this because it's the contractor and it's done by Cal Fire, but God, these, some of this thing is cheap. It's four acres and it gets $550. Look, after doing some weed abatement on properties, those fees are low and I guess this guy looks like a repeat offender and I would do the same thing if that's all I had to pay instead of having this money for $1,000 is what it should cost him to clear out four acres. I'm just saying, I think, and I know they, they do this on contract basis, but I think it's too bad we can't get some fees on the earth for these people that are continually causing a problem. And I know you can't. And then I, yeah, I know how it works.
This is the attorney my answer to that question, and I do have the same concern. And that is if you calculate city costs that have gone into this from the time that we are identified, the time that we are notified, having to schedule a public hearing twice to do this work, I certainly believe the cost of doing that exceeds the $1,400 administrative fee that is being tagged on to this. So I don't know if the law requires maximum recovery only 100% of, of the amount that is of the actual cost. If not, this is something I'll be looking at.
We established the administrative fee. We can recover our actual costs. But it's just we've adopted an administrative fee schedule which says basically double the cost of removing. But we have to obviously actually calculate what our administrative costs are.
With that, before we do the next one, can we come back with?
Absolutely.
Thank you, and that's something we could look into. And my second question, and I know Scott's not here. Most of these are vacant parcels and I know we have, we probably don't know that, these people are still occupied, their residences and have, have these large lots that we don't do. Do we ever, I mean, we're basically doing vacant lots here. But what about these properties like the two, the people with two acres that let their weeds grow up? And I know we can turn them in, but that's the only recourse we get, ever get anything back on that? Or those are straight code cases, correct?
That's true, they are court enforcement cases.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, thank you. Feel free to questions.
Any other questions, staff? This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Any cards?
No cards on this item.
Close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion and action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Cheryl.
Councilmembers Hanna, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B, LMD, districts 1, 2, 3, and 5. Dominic?
Trying to get the mic to work. I'll be brief this evening and that I don't believe there's anybody in the audience that's here from the assessment districts and only one person from District 4 and he happens to be on the Sadiq Council. The first hearing will be districts 1, 2, 3, and 5. Common to all the districts we have, 1 through 5, is that there's a CPI of 2.7% that's being applied to the assessment, not necessarily to the levy, but at least to the maximum assessment. Also, all the districts have the commonality of the fact that the water meter charges have gone up significantly in this past year. As you know, our goal in all the districts is try to get them to be balanced and so the money received equals the money that we're spending. Unfortunately, with the water rates going up that exceeded the 2.7%, most of the districts have gone into somewhat of a deficit. Quickly going through what's happened is in District 1, the, the reserve fund in that was about $12,700. This is all, by the way, in your report. With the increase in the water, it's the deficit is about $2,300 in that one, reducing the amount of money that's left in the reserve fund. Now fortunately, in District 1, we do not have any trail fencing. District 2, I'm going to skip and then come back to it. District 3 has about $59,000 that's set aside in there for trail fence and the, also the reserve to be able to carry over the first six months of expenses. That one will have a deficit of about $6,900 this year, which again will reduce the deficit, reduce the revenue reserve fund in that district down to a little bit less than $50,000. Still adequate to maintain that district. District 5, which has a significant reserve for trail fence and was of $98,000, is a balanced, balanced, we were $428 in the negative on that one this year, which I consider balanced. The, during the public meetings that we had with that particular district, we brought up, do you want us to start fixing your fences? They said, hold the money for another couple of years and we'll get back to you when we think we want to start our fences to get replaced. And so we're not tapping into that one and thankfully this year, it's a balanced budget in that one. Going back to 2, and as you know, I'm skipping 4 because that's going to be a separate hearing. District 2, as you know, is our unique one. It is just, the city has contributed money to that one to keep that district afloat. And we were getting a handle on it about two or three years ago. We were starting to drop that deficit that was in that district. And all of a sudden, with the increased cost of maintenance and increased cost of water, it started to spiral uphill or downhill, whichever direction you want to call going into a deficit. We're right now at the close of this past fiscal year, a little over $21,000 in the hole in that district. If we maintain that district at the level of maintenance we're doing currently with an increase of the water, it will then have an additional $7,900 worth of deficit in that district, again, which the city funds to make up the balance to, to pay all the bills. At the city council meeting where we set the public hearing, one member of the city council basically said, we can't be doing this. We can't be putting money into that district. Go back and look at that district because we made a suggestion, we even brought it up at the public meeting that we had with the residents, a couple of them, which did show in that particular zone, and said, we have alternative is that we maintain the parkways in that district. Let's cut the parkways out, let's stop watering them, let's stop the maintenance on just the parkways, turn it back over to the property owners for them to maintain. That would save the district about $34,000 a year. With that, we then can take away the fact that the supplement that the city's putting into it, fix the horse trails, keep them up to the standard so that they're safe. We have a couple drainage devices have failed in that particular zone, excuse me, district, of which we have closed the horse trail. We can then take some of that savings money, fix that drainage area, open back the horse trail, leaves us with additional money to start pulling out the dead landscaping of the parkways as the people start taking them over it because we're going to cut the water off. What that does is that, putting that money aside, we then are about $1,900 to the good, of which then starts to reduce that $21,000 deficit back down to the $20,000, $19,000 range. Over the next couple of years, as we remove all the landscape of the parkways and we then fix a couple more drainage devices, we then can actually have some money set aside in that district to start fixing equestrian trail fencing, which they have absolutely nothing right now in the reserve to do that because you, the city, is supplementing that district. So what I did was I added a second alternate engineers report into your packet to give you the options of choosing one or the other for, in discussion. So that basically is a nutshell, a real quick and dirty presentation on four of the five districts.
Thank you, Dominic. Questions, staff? Ted?
Yeah, Brian, since this has been published, how many people have you been contacted by LMD 2?
None.
None? And Dominic? You have none either?
And we had only one at our hearing with the community.
That was one parcel owner?
One parcel.
Two people, yeah. And you haven't heard anything back from anybody else?
No.
On either 1, 2, 3, or 5, correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
I have a quick question on the option where we're looking at taking everything out of the parkways for LMD 2. Is that just going to be then dirt or what, what is that going to?
Yeah, that'll leave it in dirt up to the private property owner to plant vegetation in there, rearrange their sprinkler system to irrigate it themselves.
But just so it's clear that if there's a tree there, that tree goes away too. Everything will be removed out of the parkway. And that's to reduce, because once we kill the water there, then vegetation's going to die, the trees are going to die. We cannot have the liability of that tree falling in the rideaway. So the trees will be cut down.
As they die.
And removed. However, we will give an option to the property owner. If the property owner does want to take over the parkway, they can hook that to their main system. And I would imagine we could issue a no fee encroachment permit for that to allow them to be able to take over the parkway.
Okay, any other questions, staff? This is a public.
Just, Brian, will that notice in an LMD 2, will, and I know this has to be done by August 10th, I believe, for it goes property art. If they get this, you're going to send that in writing to them, right?
Oh, yes.
That they will be, that that property, that parkway before we start pulling trees out, correct?
Yeah, and we want to, not only in that notice, but we'll also give them an option where we'll meet them in the field to discuss if they want to, what it would take for them to transfer that parkway in front of their home over to their, their maintenance, including the water.
So if they don't agree to it, then?
Then they'll get a notice that we're going to start to remove it.
All right.
This is a public hearing. Open the public hearing.
No cards on this item.
Thank you.
A quick question on trees.
Yes, Pat.
That are established and hitting groundwater, why do those trees have to be taken out? And I'm thinking, District 2 is Western Pacific right by my house. Sedona is a whole area on the trail side. It's across from the homes. The trees on the, on the residence, those are their private trees, but the trees on the Sedona trail side, those are city trees. They're low enough, I would think that they would have groundwater. Why do we have to automatically take all the trees out? I'm hoping if it's a tree that can sustain itself, it wouldn't have to be removed. It just makes me terrified to think of all of them coming out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Just a comment, we'll evaluate them as we go, but the water would be turned off. That's part of the savings. So if, if those trees decline and start to go, which particularly I don't see them continuing if they have no water source, especially when we're in drought conditions.
Okay.
We'll have to evaluate that.
Thank you. Are there any other cards?
No more cards on this item.
Okay. Close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any discussion and action. Okay, but let me ask Dominic a question, please, then. I just want to make sure that on LMD 2, this is going to work us out of supplementing the LMD through the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that was the goal of the alternate engineers report.
Okay. Absolutely.
Dominic, just to clarify, because I thought I heard you say the trees would be taken out as they die or all at once or by sections? Or can you clarify for me?
No, we couldn't take them all at once. They're going to, it'll, it'll be a process.
Okay.
And we'll probably look at what is declining, what's the worst section and then start removing at that point. Just because of the, the cost of removing and trying to stay within this budget, it's going to be a process to do. And I'm not even sure we can get through the whole process in one fiscal year. It may take longer than that.
Yeah, I think I read like two years in the report.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then the last question, just for clarification, there's a declining tree you need to take it out. Is that complete removal, including stumps? Or are we just going to whack them off at the ground level and call it a day?
Well, in some, in some cities where I've seen this happen in districts, they just take it and take it out at the base of the stump and leave the stump. So if we go into removing that stump, then the costs go up in removal of that. So we'll have to take a look at that.
Okay, I'm not a fan of leaving a bunch of stumps, just for the record.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Ted.
When we talk about, and all the LMDs, just so everybody understands, is LMD 2, well, I know LMD 4 in certain areas of LMD, I know we're not talking about it, it's, the parkways, the trees in the parkways are actually watered by the property owners. Is that correct?
In some districts. District 4, for example, it's watered by the property owners.
Okay.
There are certain sections that are on the master system, but most of the residential frontage of all those properties in District 4 are watered by the residents.
And what about 5?
At District 5, the parkway is included in their. At District five, the parkway is included in the district.
Okay, so the district waters it. One?
District one does not have any parkway in it.
And District three?
District three has some sections, and some sections are watered by the residents.
Okay.
Similar to District four.
Okay, I'm just, so clarification, this is not unusual for the residents of a district to be responsible to water the parkways in front of their properties.
Absolutely not.
Okay. My other question to you is, when we initially had this, and I should say that we should have done this before, when they had the 218 hearing on this matter, two years ago, wasn't this not all brought up to the residents?
Yes.
That eventually, that there would be a cost, that they would start losing services?
That's correct.
So, and again, I'm going to reiterate, there is no one from LMD two here tonight, and no one else has contacted you about the possibility of this thing, and this thing happening.
Absolutely not.
So, they are probably, should be aware of what is going on.
I do want to make one comment, that the one parcel that did show up to our community residence meeting, did say that they were in favor of a possible adjustment to the district, and that is something we could look at going into the next fiscal year, if they were willing to make an adjustment to save some of those parkways. Can't be done now, but it'd have to be in the next process.
All right, so maybe a letter to them is going to-
They were in favor, and were in favor of an adjustment to help relieve some of that. And they were, I have to say, they were very open in understanding regarding the situation and what costs are today versus when their district was first originated fifteen, over 15 years ago.
All right, thank you. My feeling is this is coming back to the point where we can't keep supplementing it eventually. I mean, our finances say we can't. So, that's my point on it. I would look forward on LMD two, when we go to motion to consider the alternative plan submitted tonight.
Any other discussion? Then let's go ahead, we're going to have to take these resolutions separately. So, to adopt Resolution number 2017-46 Beazer, a motion and a second.
Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 2017-47, Western Pacific. John, would we need to make any notes on that?
The motion needs to include which of the alternative engineers' report. I thought that the motion was to approve the alternative engineers' report, which is the elimination of the parkways. That's the alternative.
Okay. Are we good on that, Cheryl?
Yes. Okay. Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 2017-48, syntax.
Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 2017-49, for Hawks Crest.
Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to excuse Mayor Protem Hoffman. Darrell, if you would escort him from the building.
I'd get those cups out if I were you.
This will be item number 6C. LMD number four.
He's gone, so I can talk.
Thank you.
LMD number four is another one of our more favorite ones, because that's the one that always used to draw the big crowd here. And I guess we must have it under control now, because nobody's in the audience. As you know, in previous years, the budget in that assessment district was up in the $470,000 range, because they elected to put money aside to fix their trail fencing, and were starting to build up that reserve. Then we had the big issue with the energy overcharges, which then added a bunch of money into this district, which basically allowed us to finance replacement of all of the trail fencing up there in one fell swoop. By the way, that's ready to go out the bid next week. And so, very soon, you'll be seeing that back here for water bid to replace almost 50,000 lineal feet of fencing up in that area. The, what we elected to do on this one, when we presented it to the public, was, you know, do you really want to start putting money aside this fiscal year for the next series of trail fencing, to build up that fund after we do the completion of the next 50,000 lineal feet of trail fencing? We figured, okay, we don't need to really do it this year, because the trail fencing is going to be absolutely brand new. And so, the $33,000 that needs to start to be set aside, we postpone that until the following, next fiscal year, and not this particular one. The effect of that, even with the increase of the water meter rates, is we've dropped this budget down to about $410,000, which has actually reduced their assessment. They never have been paying the full maximum assessment, the levy has always been less, because this was one of the few districts that actually was set up with reserve funds and did a good cost estimate to start with, so it never was running into the hole. And so, this is one of the very fortunate one districts that we have here. So, if you look at that chart that I put in there, you're actually, you'll see that the assessment levy is substantially less than what could be placed against, especially for this particular year, because we're not putting aside money for trail fence replacement. The maximum levy in this district could be $1,022.11. But actually, all we need this year to get all the maintenance going for the landscaping, the other harms, water, et cetera, is $756.79, which is actually a reduction from last year of over $100. And so, that will be this, for this particular year. Next year, we'll bring it back to you and start, let's put, because the trail fencing will be done, hopefully be done and constructed by then, and then start building up the fund again for the next 20 years, before we have to start replacing fencing again. So, very fortunate in this district, you're going to see a reduction of the levy way below the maximum assessment value. That's a real brief report on this particular district. It's in great shape, and we're moving ahead.
Thank you, Dominic. Any questions of staff? This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Does Clerk have any cards?
No cards on this item.
I'll close the public hearing, and bring it back for any further discussion or action.
Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Kind of nice without Ted here. Can we forget Ted?
Yeah, let's keep moving along.
I'd recommend you move the rest of the-
I'm just kidding to the camera.
This is ordinance number 1024, first reading. Chad?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This item is a follow-up to previous discussion from last year. We had brought to the city council a lengthy discussion, important discussion, about doing additional maintenance on our tree inventory in the city. We had a large inventory of trees that were determined to be dead, dying, diseased, or deformed. And we had a discussion regarding that, because Edison had offered to start removing some of those trees that they had an impact on, and so that was to benefit us. And council allowed them, based off of a five-year schedule, to go ahead and remove those trees over time. And also, staff, in our own budget, council provided additional funds for the city to begin removing other trees that were within our jurisdiction that hadn't been impacted directly by Edison's previous maintenance practices. So, we have been, as two different entities, have been fairly aggressive in trying to maximize those dollars this year into removing trees. Part of that other discussion with that was, while we're removing trees, what is the plan or thought process of trying to preserve the existing tree inventory we have, but also replacing trees? One of the instructions from council was to bring back a plan or ordinance that would help provide guidance to how trees might be replanted, what's their methodologies, what's our process, how could it be done? And so, what we did this, over the last six, eight months, was review what information was available. And there was two pieces of information that was available already in place. One was our current municipal code, which is 12.12, which is basically our tree, our street trees. And also, this document here, which is our urban forest specification and standards, which had been previously created 20 years ago. And that was a guide for folks to kind of talk about if you're going to plant trees, here's the type of trees that should be planted, how they should be planted, et cetera. So, that, we had those two documents to start with. In reviewing our issue, and part of our issue was about funding, I mean, and how we would get funding to plant trees. Right now, we, as you know, we do struggle with our budget in regards to having enough funds just to do annual maintenance, and have even a trimming schedule, which we're trying to get towards. So, adding in the obligation or expectation to plant trees, which is additional resources, so, and the suggestions were made, and rightfully so, about trying to find alternative methods of getting funding, or donations of either trees themselves, or funding for trees to be planted. And those are things we are looking at trying to do outside of budget requests. So, we looked at the ordinance, determined what it had information, and it needed some updates on that. And these are updates that it worked with the Parks Director with, in reviewing what had been in place. We worked with the Public Works Superintendent, as far as understanding how our practices and our issues have changed over the last 20 years, and to find out whether or not what we currently have in the ordinance makes sense, is it need to be augmented, provide additional information, again, about communicating to the public, here's what you can do, here's our process, et cetera. So, we added quite a bit of augmentation to the text, writing descriptions, defining items, so people understood exactly what we were talking about, adding clear language about processes of how trees could be removed if they're in the public right of way by residents or by the city, and what those processes are, how people can actually plant trees on their own if they want to, and what those processes are. So, we've tried to make sure that this covered not only the, how trees could be removed, but what trees could be, and how they would be replaced. We did review this information with the Streets Trails Utilities Commission. They asked some good questions, had very minor changes to the, really just edits on format, to the proposed language that you have before you. And you now asked me to approve that this language should go forward, mending the current municipal code. Future work that would be done would be updating this current manual to current trees that we're looking at doing, incorporating Edison's preferred tree template or palette under those particular areas. Again, just reviewing the documentation, the staff will be doing that, and again, bringing that forward to the Streets Trails Utilities Commission at some point for their review and feedback, so that we have the second part, which is how we can improve this communication tool, make sure it's readily available, make sure it's on the website. And again, at some point, again, talk about if you want a tree, how we would do it. The thing we want to preference that is that we need to make sure we have a defined budget for replacement before we truly start publishing you can get a tree. We would want to talk about that you could plant a tree, we want to educate people, it needs to be the right tree. Communicate with Public Works. We would work with them in that process, understand what they're trying to achieve, what the requirements are to make sure that that tree is watered properly, et cetera, and the maintenance obligations to that. One of the changes that we did make in here, functionally, as far as an organization, the existing municipal code references the responsibility for trees under Parks and Rec. And it lists, you know, as far as advisory group as the Parks Commission. We revised that so that it reflected that, since Public Works does do the maintenance, that Public Works would take responsibility for that program, and the STUC committee would then be the advisory group. So, that is one functional change that we did do, that changes that dynamic. We think it's a policy that, again, over time, it can still be changed, revised, as we learn things, we go through this process, but I think it's a good beginning in regards to communicating the process. When and if, at times, we either dedicate funding by city council directive in the budget process, or we receive funds in, or materials in that we can be used, we would work with the Clerk's Office and our media outlets to review that, and to get that out to folks, and talk about the process of how that would be done. In that, most likely, again, we would focus first and foremost on folks that had a tree had removed, and then we would use the ordinance, and how, we would do that, how many trees they could possibly get, because it's defined on your frontage and the space between trees. We want to make sure this is done the right way, so you don't get overcrowding. And that's one of the biggest issues to deal with, is too many trees grow in one area, and they grow into each other, and we can't properly trim them. So, we think it's a very balanced ordinance, and it's a first step. It doesn't mean, and anytime, we can always continue to revise it as we learn more in this process. So, it's not a finite, this is how it's going to be. We can always come back and revisit it anytime. With that, I would answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chad. Any questions of staff? Okay.
So, Chair, on this new ordinance here, under 12.12.060, the trimming and pruning of trees, and as you go through on 12.12.080, the maintenance and the guarantee of trees. So, that would be something, what you're saying is, you would, we could put together in a small pamphlet size, maybe go on the water bill, so that the property owners get that correct?
As far as, it's, that kind of covers two sections. Part of that is about a builder's obligations for the maintenance of the trees. In that, 12.12.80 is, if they put in the trees, part of a development, there's obligations for them to maintain those trees for a certain time period before we accept them. When a resident puts in a tree, that obligation for the watering of the tree is their obligation in order to obviously keep that tree healthy. The city has the obligation for maintenance of that tree beyond eight feet. So, if it's a small tree at the time, they have the obligation as a homeowner to maintain that, and the municipal gives them the right to trim that. And ironically, again, the specifications talked about are how you should trim that tree, not butchering it, cutting it away, so it gives you kind of guidance on how to do that.
What I'm getting at is, under the provisions of this ordinance, we're going to try to give the homeowners, the property owners, a Reader's Digest version of this, because we hear it all the time concerning, don't touch that tree, it belongs to the city, or why should I do this? When actually, under this ordinance, yes, you can trim it, you can keep it up in front of your house till the period of eight feet. And I think what happens is, most residents or property owners understand that they can take care of that, and it is somewhat their responsibility, make sure that tree gets some water. So, as long as that's what we're saying in this ordinance.
Yeah, the current ordinance already allows that. And again, and it's going to Robin's point of view, and what you're pointing out, is it's about how are we educating folks about existing ordinances, and even its modifications? So, this doesn't change that ability, and it always is there, which is about whether or not we've ever communicated that to residents, let them know, you can maintain your own tree up to what you can reach. Beyond that, we will come in and maintain that. So, that already existed, but we, again, probably have never done a good job to educate them. We will do that as part of this process.
All right, thank you.
This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Cheryl, are there any cards?
Pat, over street.
Good evening again, Pat.
Hello again, Mr. Mayor and council. Well, trees, one of my favorite subjects. I'm really glad to hear there's a plan, and we've got a municipal code, and we're going to have some education. I'm really distressed to see the trees that have been taken out, and I'm hoping there will be some replacements. And I really encourage you to consider the Canary Island pine. I know you've got an arborist on staff, and Canary Island pines, I love the fact that they grow so straight and tall, you don't need to trim them like you do other trees. Every time I go to the Ontario Airport, and you look at those rows and rows of mature Canary Island pines, they're absolutely gorgeous. And to me, nothing depicts a Western idea more than a pine tree. That's why I don't like those palms. One of the things I'm concerned about, though, is the landscaping requirements on our commercial properties, because I've seen trees on commercial properties, I understand it's private, but they have an obligation when they come before planting- they have an obligation, when they come before planning commission, to submit their landscape requirements, and trees are usually a good part of that. And there's one commercial property across from State of Blair, and I apologize for not knowing its official name, but they planted sycamores, and the property owner came in and put in a lot of Queen Anne palms, and then proceeded to continue to cut the sycamores down. And I understand part of their objection was, the sycamores got fat, and they felt that they were hiding the businesses. Well, the sycamores ought to be allowed to gain eight feet, be trimmed at the bottom. And when you look at the commercial area at the corner of, by the, by the post office, those are trimmed, their sycamores trimmed properly. In the five or six years they've been put in, they've gained great height, they look wonderful, and we're missing out on that type of a tree in other parts of the town. And so we need to protect the urban forest on these commercial properties. So I'm hoping we can do something about that particular property owner. The sycamores keep trying to come back, and I noticed they were about maybe this tall, and darn, they're gone again. So besides our city trees, I'd like to see our commercial trees and their requirement of landscaping protected too. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
No more cards on this item.
Thank you, Cheryl. Close the public hearing, bring it back for any further discussion, questions? And I have a couple. Steve, with what Mrs. Overstreet was just referring to, so when a project comes to planning, and you all, you know, go over all the landscape drawings and all the percentage requirements, et cetera, et cetera, do we have any mechanism in place to, you know, like in this case, so many years later, you know, they just come in and cut down the trees when they're required to have a percentage?
Well, the projects are typically conditioned, one, that a landscaping plan has to be approved, and then, two, they're conditioned to have to maintain the landscaping. The, honestly, there hasn't been a lot of enforcement on approved landscaping plans in commercial centers. I would have to do some research about how, what our limits are in terms of dictating what they can and can't do in terms of after the trees are planted, especially when shopping centers change owners. And so those conditions are on the projects typically, but I would have to get back to you and do some research about what our authority is to prohibit them from planting different kinds of trees.
Yeah, I was just curious if it's more of a code enforcement issue, or, but I also think that's the exception to the rule. Most businesses want to enhance their landscaping, so, when you have time, if you could check into that. And then Chad, this last month, in the Western City Magazine that we all get, there was an article about the city of Claremont, and their outreach and communications with the residents, and the volunteers, and what they're doing with their tree programs. And I'd like to see that, if you're not familiar with that article or that program, that you look at it, and perhaps make that an agenda item for the Streets and Trails Commission as an outreach type of program for our residents.
I'll look it up.
Okay. Any other further discussion?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco, amending Chapter 12.12 Street Trees of the Norco Municipal Code, Code Amendment 2017-08.
Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protim Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6E.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the, this is the follow-up to today's other ordinance amendment, the second reading, which adopts the language for the energy pass-through, again, that we aired and removing from the previous municipal code. This adds the fee portion back into our fee schedule, because part of our ordinance re-modification earlier this year is, we took all the fee-related numbers out of the ordinance and put them in a fee schedule. This adds that same fee schedule we have been charging to that fee schedule. So it's now, again, another fee that's on that list that we can clearly show to residents. And that's all, at this time, I have any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff? If not, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
No cards on this item.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for any further discussion or action.
Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protim Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7A, continued public hearing, approval of economic development subsidy report. Andy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a request to continue this public hearing through August 2nd for the final time. We are still working with the developer to finalize the grading plans, as well as reach an agreement on the language with respect to the economic incentive agreement. His lawyer is still reviewing the document, and we need additional time to finalize that process, and we are requesting for this item to be continued to August 2nd for the final time.
And this, this will still be a date certain?
Yes.
And if it goes beyond August 2nd?
Yeah, well, yeah.
I have a quick question. In the staff report, it talks about that the incentive agreement is time-sensitive. Is it time-sensitive on our side of the table, or on their side of the table?
The incentive agreement is time-sensitive in the way it's structured. Once the grading plans are approved, and the committee side issue, 18 months to complete the project. So that is the reason why we can't just, the incentive agreement without them being ready to get going.
Okay.
Entertain a motion?
Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protim Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 8A, discussion action items. This is an update on the Norconian Club Hotel repairs, city manager, and I'd like to just make a note, here, a while ago, that council had requested that we have oversight on the funds that we used for the repairs on the roof and things like that. So I'd like to incorporate this as also the oversight report on that funding. And I'll turn that over to Andy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if you recall back in 2016, you did approve a total sum of $60,000 to be paid to the Lett Norconian Club Foundation, Lett Norconian Club Foundation, to assess them with the costs associated with the temporary repairs of the Norconian Hotel. Since the approval of that payment to them, the city has paid a total amount of $43,225,000 to Lett Norconian Club Foundation for costs related to the repair efforts, as well as their mitigation effort to protect the hotel. So out of that $60,000, $16,775,000 still remains to be paid to Lett Norconian Club Foundation. They have indicated that they intend to seek reimbursement for the remaining amount. They are here tonight to present to City Council with update in terms of what they have done with the assistance that has been provided, and to showcase the work that they have done.
Good evening.
Good evening, Linda.
My name is Linda Dixon, President of Lake Norconian Club Foundation. This has been a 15-year effort, plus, as you know, and I'm going to make this brief because it is late, and I don't function well at this time. We have, we have moved forward. As you know, we're in litigation with the State of California Department of Corrections regarding the access to this building and the repairs that are needed to preserve and protect this building. Through the efforts of our own fundraising efforts, along with the allocation given by the City of Norco, we've been able to complete several repairs on the hotel. We do have two or three that we have identified to the Department of Corrections and to the State of California Historic Preservation Office that we would like to complete prior to our court date, which we now have, and that is November 17th. So far, we have prevailed in several interim judgments, and we're hoping that this next court date will be a good one. Just to remind you a little bit of what we were fighting against, the leaks in the roof, various problems that we had, this is the beautiful kitchen, and for those of you who have been in there, you realize that this had to stop. The water that was going into this area was also leaking down into the ballroom area and into the dining area. This is another portion of that kitchen area. This is part of the artifacts that we have identified, that we will be removing. We had to go through and identify several of the artifacts. We cannot take them all out, we would love to, that we'll be able to remove and to showcase in the community center historic room. There is another, and you can see the condition they're all in. We're also going to try to save some of the tapestry, but that is, it's pretty cost-prohibitive at this time, but hopefully with this court ruling, we'll have a little more leeway. This was the portion of the roof that we had done some work on, this is prior to the work, and this is part of the reason for all the flooding down inside of the hotel. This is a building that has been identified as our next project that will be removed. This building is weighing heavily on the roof, and it's only a matter of time till it caves in. Now I'm going to talk to some of the allocated funds. We have gone in, I'm going to, Sue Bacon is the construction chair, so to speak, and so she will talk to you on the items that we have been able to complete. But we have been working with plumbing, heating, and air company, along with a first-rate plumber. This contractor has worked on many historic buildings through the state of California, he's highly recommended. We have gone in, and we have, and a lot of this, I don't totally understand, but we've been able to unplug or cap many, many of the drains on the roof that was leading to a lot of the problems. We have been able to take off part of the roof, and I can go and give you dimensions on the three-ply modified roofing system consisting of one layer of glaze base, layer of smooth modified ply, a later, layer of white modified cap sheet, all self-adhering. But that gets a little boring, I'm sure. The pictures that you're going to see is going to show you exactly what we've done. We did remove a ton of debris from the roof, and it was amazing what all was up there. The debris was on the flat roof areas, and we eliminated a lot of the drains that were leading to the pools of water on the roof. And one area was so bad that we had to re-roof that total area. Let's see here. We've also boarded up doors and broken windows. We washed and cleared, there's an entire sheet of all the drains that we have washed and cleared. We have, as I said, capped off and replaced some of the drain areas with pumps. Some of the drain lines were rotted off, and they were flooding down into the columns inside the hotel. We have, some of the drains are absolutely working, as was shown throughout some of the last rains. We had, as you saw, the deep water on the roofs that are no longer in existence. I'm going to let Sue talk to some of the issues on the pumps. We installed nine solar pumps with drain lines, and ran these drain lines to off the roof area. These pumps are rain-sensitive, so that we do not have to go out there after every rain to see if they're working or to turn them on. They're sensitive to the point that if we get in a certain amount of light rain, they'll automatically turn on. We have requested that after the court date that we be allowed in, however, after every rain, and just to make sure everything is done. We've replaced several areas of the roof, and right now, they're holding, and it's, and we had quite a lot of rain this last winter, and so far, that area is working. We have another large portion of the roof that we've identified that we would like to also repair, and this will be done with existing funds. We've spent a like amount or more of our own funds on these projects, along with so far $65,000 in attorney fees. Right now, our attorney is working on her own dime, and so she sees, she wouldn't be doing that if she didn't visualize hope in November. We've worked diligently, we've gone in, and waste management was good enough to give us the hallway bins, and we were able to create a chute from the roof and use those bins to get rid and haul off all of the debris, and we're leaving that hotel far better than we found it. And this is what Andy has just spoke to. Now I'm going to turn this over to Sue.
Good evening, Sue.
Hi, Greg, Mr. Mayor. This has been an arguous task, as I'm sure you know. The state, the corrections department is responsible for this building, and they have chosen to take the way of neglect, demolition by neglect, and that is our legal suit. This is a national landmark, and it doesn't matter whether it is surrounded by a prison, it needs to be preserved. Prisons go away, times do change. This is the general contractor, Mark, who is pointing to me. This is the general contractor, Mark, who is pointing to me, um, the level of flooding that we were seeing. The flat roofs, because the drains were being, uh, controlled by raccoons. That was the excuse that the prison system used, that the, that the pumps that had been installed there, um, that the raccoons were tearing them down, and they were no longer effective. That was also drainage, um, had been plugged. Now granted, and in defense, plumbing and codes are different today when building a, um, a hotel such as this, so piping is inadequate, um, but simple, uh, clearing of drains would have helped so much. I am hoping. Do, no? Okay. Uh, this, this is part of the crew for plumbing. Um, again, this is the flat roof. This is just adjacent to the flat roof of the kitchen that we did major repair to and the, the flat roofs that are going into the spa areas. This is at the front of the hotel off the entrance. These were offices and hallways below. There was major damage. These were areas where, again, flat roof and drains. Pumps hadn't even been put here, so these were drains that had been clogged with, you don't even wanna know. Don't even wanna know. So they had to rip off all of the roofing, um, just to repair them. That's some of the standing water. Again, the chutes, um, a lot of work. We had an amazing crew, and most of these people were being led by people that have had a history of dealing with historic homes and dis, historic buildings throughout the state, so we felt very confident with the work that was being done. Attaching electrical plumbing, um, again, we had nine pumps. We are going back to do more. This is a arched area, that dome area is that of the pool area of off one of the spas. And, okay, I'm gonna try to do this. This is the building that we are planning, um, is our next building to move. It has, um, antiquated equipment that is literally sink, sinking through the ceiling, and that area is that of Broadway. So for those of you that know the pictures, when you go into the hotel, the entrance, the long hallway down off the entrance, that is referred to as Broadway. Phenomenal artwork, pendants, all of that is being destroyed by this building. It's already coming through the roof, and that is where the water is seeping through. Standing water. Great shots, don't you think? This is one of our, um, contractors actually trying to clear out one of the drains. More, Anna pump being put through. This is our new roof. This is the roof that is over the kitchen. You saw the damaged roof, um, prior. We have a now fully, uh, laid composite. Now off to, right off to the side, there is, there is still a part of that roof that we had not designated in the beginning, but we are going back to because in, um, unbeknownst, until the first rains came, we still have water going into the, uh, dining room and therefore into the lounge in the ballroom below. I know there was a lot of questions, not to you because you've been hearing the stories, but publicly, everyone says, who cares about a kitchen? It's not the kitchen that was important. It was the artwork in the rooms below and all the artifacts that, um, were being ruined because that roof had never been dealt with. I know you don't get excited about roofing. Greg does.
I do.
But this is beautiful. This is just beautiful. I can't thank you guys enough. I truly cannot thank you enough. All of this was literally had to be, um, supported. It was astounding. It was astounding to find a crew that would go up on the roof. It was that bad. The support beams were so rotted out, so we were just so blessed to find, uh, to have this crew and the work that they did. I know it's exciting, but it is exciting. All new. This is still flat roof that we still wanna continue. Those are now new pumps right there, um, with piping going out, drainage going out and over, and these are raccoon-proof. This is that new roof we saw prior with the men tearing it apart. There is also a roof above on the next level that we also are going to need to, um, address eventually, but we're very, very hopeful with how the courts have been going so far. This place matters. Those two roofs that you saw at the very end were right there and right there. We wanna address the roof right here. This is the entrance, the artwork, the, um, chandeliers. We now have, in the final, um, drows of getting the artifacts out, we wanna thank the city for giving us a place where we'll be able to house these artifacts. Being in historic restoration as long as I have been, uh, this place does matter, and I want you to know that every dime that you have given us, um, we feel very responsible for. We wanna make sure you know that we are grateful and the work that we are doing. Just a little follow-on on what we've been going through this year. We've been able to enter into the hotel several times based on, uh, emergency permission. We have been delayed in getting our right-of-entry, uh, because of issues on the Department of Corrections side. Uh, I have been signing in the past, uh, right-of-entry, um, contracts that involve perhaps five pages, that was very detailed. This year, they threw about 11 pages at us, and I refused to sign. There's many things that I could not commit to and I would not commit to, uh, so we've been going back and forth with attorneys. Everything, uh, right now, um, is a, a major problem, and we're having to, uh, spend a great deal of time with paperwork, phone calls, uh, letters, fights. They've also brought in the, uh, State Historic, uh, Office, uh, to try to monitor every single thing that is done, which we are going by code. We're going by everything the judge says, uh, and all the, uh, permissions that we have gotten from, through the court, um, but they're just keep laying on other layers, uh, constantly. They do not care about this hotel. They would like to see us gone, and after 15 years of fighting the fight, I don't think it's gonna happen right now. With the right-of-entry that, uh, we have finally whittled down, and I will sign, uh, now they would like us to go through a 500-page document regarding OSHA requirements. So it's just one thing after another, and we have complied with all OSHA requirement, uh, requirements. However, uh, they would like, uh, the additional terminology, uh, which we're doing. We are following. We're not gonna give up. They're trying to, um, dissuade us from our efforts, and that's not gonna happen. They ask us to identify, uh, the remaining projects that we hope to see in completion by the end of the year, which we have done. They ask us to identify any and all artifacts that we wish to remove. We have done that. We have sent them the spreadsheets where they're located and all. They came back and asked for accompanying photos for each one. We have done that, and as you can see, it has, uh, you haven't heard a lot because we're just buried in this. But what we see, when we look at this building behind these, this fence, is the future of Norco and the future of the region. And, uh, I've, I've often said, whether it happens in my lifetime or not, I don't know, but many of you up there are young enough to carry on the fight, and on behalf of the city, I hope you do, and we so appreciate everything you've done. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Linda or Sue? You guys are doing great. You know that.
Thank you. You've gotten really good at jumping through hoops. I bet you're thrilled about that with me, huh?
Jumping from roof to roof. Thank you so much for the update. Okay. City Council Communications, Kevin. Ted. Um, I'm sorry, maybe, yeah. Do you wanna take an action to receive and file? I'm sorry. On item 8A?
We could, yes.
Do you wanna make a motion, please?
Councilmember Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash? Mayor Protim Hoffman? Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, Ted, any updates? Robin?
No.
Irwin?
Loz.
Andy?
No.
Lieutenant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanna talk a little bit about tonight. We've, we've had our homeless outreach team out here, and this is gonna be a story about three individuals who we've had a number of calls for service regarding panhandling and trespassing issues in the area of Hidden Valley and, uh, the various cross streets there. So these three individuals have, have basically come to our attention, like I said, through calls for service for a number of, of violations and issues. Each of these people have, or these persons have been cited on several occasions, and some of them have been arrested. And when I've talked about how we contend with the homeless, I said, when you, when you deal with these people, you have symptoms and you have the overall disease. And when we cite these people, they really do not have the means to pay the fines through the administrative process. So that is in, in our terminology, we're treating just the symptom and not the overall disease. So it takes time, and it takes a lot of resources. Every year, we do our homeless point-in-time count, where we work with the county, Department of Social Services, as well as veteran groups and organizations specifically to identify individuals that we can place into housing. That's the best option for us because that's treating the overall disease and getting these people off the street. So we do that, and we have a good handle on who we have out here, and I, I've said this before, being homeless and being a transient is not a crime. It is not a crime to exist. It is not a crime to be walking down the sidewalk with your possessions. So with these three individuals that we have been working on since I've been here, one is now a year sober and back in housing with his family. The second one is in treatment out of state, and the third one that has come to our attention recently, again, we have housing for him. He's on the list. He's under the watch of a social worker. We've been working with him, and I wanna give credit to Deputy Robertson back there. He's part of our, our ongoing group. He liaisons with our, our Hoopa Valley Station homeless outreach team, and again, we have a, he is on the list to be housed. It's just that we're waiting for an opening, so we hope that that will, will take place soon so that we are actually treating whatever issues are for him being homeless and getting him off the streets, because that is, for us, the best result that we can have because they are no longer in that area. So that's just, uh, kind of a, a summary of where we are with those individuals. We do have people that pass through town. They may be here a day or two, but they move on, but we do watch everyone closely. There are some that do commit crime, and they're held accountable. But in terms of these individuals, the ones that we do see panhandling, the ones out in the center medians, these people have been here for a number of years. We are looking at the long-term solution, and, and I think that on the near horizon, we'll have at least three that we've been able to successfully find some kind of treatment, whether it be through the judicial process or through our work with the Department of Social Services. They're getting some kind of treatment that they need and ultimately, hopefully, some housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I appreciate the update. Gina? Brian? Question for you. Wayne Macon, uh, bid schedule, bid results?
Revisions to the plan check have, were resubmitted to building and safety, and we're just waiting for the final clearance to bid it.
Okay. Thank you. Steve? Chad?
Since this is a tree night, um, you may have noticed out on Market Street, uh, the Bank of America's been beginning, uh, removing the trees that are on Market in preparation for our, um, street repaving project includes the, um, sidewalks. They have indicated that they do plan on replanting trees along that area with appropriate root barriers at some later date, um, but if, in case you have seen it, that's why they're removing it, was part of the requirement, so we can do the proper, um, replacement project on Market, so.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Nothing.
Are you sure?
Oh, my God.
Okay. Um, I'd like to close this meeting, uh, in honor of Dane DeWes, who passed away. Just briefly, that, uh, Dane was a co-founder of, uh, the Little Miss Norco Cowgirls Drill Team, and his daughter, uh, was a young Miss Norco Mounted Posse Queen and a participant in the, uh, flag team for the National Day of the Cowboy. Just a great guy and, um, a loving, caring man. So I'd just like to have a brief moment of silence. And we're adjourned.